Falmouth Community Television's Coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes. Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. (548) 4747 or gogreenharbor.com.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. (508) 548-7303 or toll-free at (1-800) 696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. (877) 634-2638 or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Upper Cape Pet City is your local private pet city company on the upper Cape. We specialize in caring for your pets in the comfort of your own home, allowing for consistency in care routine. Dog walking, puppy and cat care, off-leash play, as well as transportation services. Upper Cape Pet City, we treat your pets like our own.
Simply Hearing is an independent locally-owned center for all your hearing needs. Simply Hearing is conveniently located in the center of Homeport Professional Offices. We offer all manufacturers, simple consultation, and years of service. Simply Hearing, (508) 548-8123.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Dogs and Hogs, family-owned and operated for over five years. Our slow-smoked barbecue is available for dine-in, pickup, or catering, now featuring our homemade barbecue sauce. We also serve beer and wine, have gluten-free options, and lobster rolls.
The Attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration. (508) 548-8255.
We at Falmouth Fish believe there is nothing better than a fresh piece of fish direct from the waters of Cape Cod in New England. Nothing beats waking up at 4:00 a.m. to search out the highest-quality seafood from the best fishermen in the world.
Seven Stars Academy, offering martial arts and Tai Chi. Training at Seven Stars Academy can transform your life. It's amazing to see the positive impact it has on our students. Classes for adults and children of all ages. Confidence, not conflict, at Seven Stars Academy of Martial Arts.
Hamilton Tree and Landscape has been proudly serving Falmouth and the upper Cape since 1978. Our newest location on Route 151 is now open for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, (508) 540-4944.
Calphi Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calphi cares about all your insurance needs. (508) 540-2601 and online at calphinesurance.com.
Thomas J. Bunker and Jeffrey E. Reither are BSS Design, providing land surveying and civil engineering in Falmouth since 1987. Licensed and fully insured, they're located on Catherine Lee Bates Road, and their phone number is (540) 8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street Downtown Falmouth. Bayside Kitchen and Bath at 419 Palmer Avenue in Falmouth, where design and installation professionals work closely with homeowners, architects, and builders, offering a full range of cabinetry, countertops, and faucets. Bayside Kitchen and Bath, returning you to beautiful spaces.
Waypoint Living Spaces, carrying a large variety of products to suit your needs in any living space of your house. Waypoint, available locally at Bayside Kitchen Bath or online at waypointlivingspace.com.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. With a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessory and gourmet foods, our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs. (508) 540-0407.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
Cavosa Disposal is proud to provide trash removal, recycling, and composting to local businesses in Falmouth and surrounding communities. Cavosa Disposal would like to thank its customers in Falmouth. Cavosa Disposal, (508) 563-5070. Family-owned since 1919. At Pirrit and Cape Cod, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment and much more. Located on Main Street, Falmouth, and in Chatham, Ashpee, and Hyannis. Pirrit and Cape Cod, 199 Main Street, Falmouth, and online at pirritandcapecod.com.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Dolpi Septic Plumbing, residential, commercial pumping and cleaning. (508) 548-5488.
Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum, friendsofnobbska.org. The Falmouth EDIC, falmouthedic.org, (508) 548-7440.
Partners Technology, voice and data solutions. (781) 930-5000.
The Annie Hart Cool Team. (508) 868-0664.
St. Elizabeth Seaton Church. (508) 563-7770.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery. (508) 548-5288.
M. Duffney Builders. (508) 540-3625.
Neighborhood Falmouth. (508) 564-7543.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop. (508) 274-2057.
Danny's Barber Shop. (508) 548-6013.
Carl F. Cavosa Excavating. (508) 563-5530.
Paul's Precision Automotive Repair. (508) 548-3164.
David Rogers Electric. (508) 564-7507.
Murray and McDonald Insurance. (1-800) 800-8990.
The Davy Tree Expert Company. (508) 548-2662.
Andy's Barber Shop in the Falmouth Plaza.
Chapman Colen Gleason. (508) 540-4172.
Hanush Jewelers in downtown Falmouth. (508) 548-9107.
Mahoney's Garden Center. (508) 548-4842.
The Cape Cod Five. (508) 457-5252.
Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank in Falmouth and Woods Hole. (508) 627-4266.
Falmouth Volunteers and Public Schools. (508) 548-1621.
Vidal Metalwork. (508) 457-9035.
And Steve's Pizzeria and More. (508) 457-9454.
Additional support provided by Roach Brothers, Stop &amp; Shop, Walmart, and Windfall Market.
Okay, all town meeting members present, please come forward, take your seats, make sure you have your clicker. And we're gonna run the quorum. All town meeting members present, please press 1A for the establishment of a quorum. Yep, 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 it stopped, it stopped up there, we're gonna... Okay, all members present, please press 1A for the establishment of a quorum. By a counted vote of 181, we have a quorum and I call this town meeting into session. All present, please rise for the presentation of the colors by the Joint Scouting Color Guard of Falmouth. Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, a nation of God and God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll recognize Tom Walrath for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, may your meeting this evening not only be an exercise of care and concern for our community and its residents, but also an example of how a community can agree and disagree and still be a community. We ask you to watch over and protect our families, our community, our nation, and our world. May your gift of peace become a reality for all. Amen.
And at this moment, we'll have a moment of silence in special recognition of former selectman and longtime volunteer of the community, Nathan Ellis, and also for Worcester Fire Lieutenant Jason Menard, who many of you may have heard perish this morning while saving lives in a Worcester fire. That's why our flags out front are at half-staff, so our moment of silence tonight for him and his family and our fire service brothers and sisters in our prayers. Colors, post? Falmouth Joint Scouting Color Guard. Okay, we left off last night with Article 12. Before we do that, I would like to mention that sitting in Scoba Rhodes' seat, our longtime former member and good friend, is his daughter Lynn Rhodes, who is seating tonight as a new town meeting member in his seat. So Lynn, welcome. You're making Dad proud. Article 12, Board of Selectmen for the main motion. Mr. Scherer. Article nine, microphone.
I would like to ask for reconsideration of Article Nine, which was held at the last second.
Article Nine, yep, the motion was indefinite postponement?
Yes.
Okay, is there a new information that wasn't available to the meeting at the time of the original vote?
Well, it wasn't indefinite postponement when we started the meeting, and all of a sudden it was for no reason. And I don't think anybody's had a chance to really say anything about it. I thought it was very quickly done. And I believe we're having a new fire station, I hope, soon. And I think what this article would put on there for a reason.
Okay, and the record will show that I asked twice if anyone wanted to place a positive motion on the floor, and no one did. But I'm gonna just take the vote. All those in favor of reconsideration, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The noes have it, and we're not reconsidering it. Article 12. Article 12, Madam Chairman, for the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 12 as recommended.
Article 12 as recommended, this is to vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate the acquisition of a parcel land at the intersection of Worcester Court and Springbards Road, now or formerly owned by Wilbur and Sharon Mueller. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Julian Suso, Town Manager. Article 12 is regarding the lease or purchase of property for municipal parking purposes, like the prior article, Article 11, which the town meeting approved last evening. Article 12 seeks town meeting guidance on a proposal to acquire property for off-street municipal public parking. As we've noted, the demand for parking in downtown for the purposes of accessing not only areas downtown, but Woods Hole and Falmouth Beaches has continued to grow considerably. Those of us who regularly are downtown during the entire year are well aware of the increasing demand. And I know we had comments last night from a number of town meeting members, including our president of the Chamber of Commerce, so confirming. A plan is underway to expand the existing Cape Cod RTA shuttle bus service routes to include stops at potentially newly acquired parking sites. These shuttles would take those who park there to downtown, Woods Hole, and to the beaches particularly, nearby beaches at Heights and Surf Drive. No overnight parking would be permitted at these proposed sites. This article is brought to town meeting for advisory purposes only. The next steps, subject to town meeting favorable approval, would be to negotiate the acquisition by mutual agreement only of, in this case, the parcel at Worcester Court. We have a map coming up next. There would be no hostile environmental taking. I'm sorry, I got one more bullet point left there. Future town meeting would be approving and required to approve the set aside of appropriate funds for either lease or purchase. So if we do go forward this evening, you'll be seeing this again and have the opportunity to further discuss. And now we can go to the map. And now we can go to the map. Thank you, Anthony. And again, this is the existing largely paved parcel at Springsbars Road and Worcester Court, and it is an existing commercial property. I think it was most recently used for temporary storage purposes for the construction on the wastewater expansion project. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Moderator, should there be any?
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Dufrin.
Fellow town meeting members, Adrian Dufrin, Precinct 2, representative. And as I stood before you last night and didn't talk long enough, and I lost the article, but I'm asking you to vote against this purchase and this acquired parcel, which is right next to, I refer to it as a junkyard. I was caught, I was to building department, we could go down and take a look at it. And the 129 units of affordable housing that are in that area, I'm very familiar when that was a dead end. Springbars Road was a dead end. It was a relief for people coming from East Falmouth, they used Springbars Road as a shortcut to get to the shopping complexes. And I would hate to see that parcel as a parking lot next to 129 residential units. They can say all they want, I'm familiar with what happens to parking lots after dark. It just puts another burden on the police department. I don't think it's necessary. I think it's in good hands, and the people that bought it for whatever reason that they bought it for, they should use it. My concerns are Springbars Road is a heavily used road, and Worcester Court is a racetrack. And again, I'm gonna repeat, this is a lot not big enough for actually a municipal parking lot. And whatever your decision is, doesn't bother me. I live three streets away, and it's not bothering, I go to the Plaza, and it's only two-minute drive. But I ask for your consideration that don't allow this type of thing to come before us. We have so many important things that Mr. Suso and his people that work with him have to worry about in this town of Falmouth, than finding parking space that may or may not be utilized for their purpose. Thank you very much for listening to me. The vote is in your hands. Thank you.
Mr. Noonan, and then Mr. Haylen.
Mr. Suso said not to take it by eminent domain. Has that been amended? Has this article been amended?
The main motion is the recommendation, which is to vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate the acquisition of a parcel of land. So the recommendation is the main motion.
Okay, so the Article 12 where it says, "The Board of Selectmen to lease, purchase, or take by eminent domain..."
Yeah, that's the article, but the motion is below it, which is to vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate the acquisition.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Haylen.
Thank you, Michael Haylen, Precinct 5. I had a similar question, because Mr. Suso last night said that he would not take Article 11 by eminent domain, but Article 11 does say, "or take by eminent domain," and the same thing tonight, where Mr. Suso on Slide 2 said...
And Article 11's main motion last night was to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate the acquisition. That was the main motion last night.
Okay, can I make an amendment to Article 12 to include not take by eminent domain?
They're not, it's not in the motion, so they can't take it by eminent domain. They have to negotiate the acquisition. An eminent domain taking is not a negotiation. Okay.
I just think that the clarification of what Mr. Suso said...
I think you just need to look at the difference between an article and a motion on the floor of town meeting. The article is the four scope. We have to work within the four corners of the scope of an article that tells the public what we might discuss at town meeting. When you come to town meeting, you have a series of motions made on the floor and printed in the warrant booklet, which are the actions that this town meeting is looking to take. The action before the town meeting right now, and last night on Article 11, is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate the acquisition. So they cannot take by eminent domain this property, because you're not authorizing them to use eminent domain. So it's a moot point, because they're not authorized in the motion that's before the body.
But, Mr. Moderator, quick question. In the motion, it says, "as further described in this article," which would then point to the eminent domain language?
The description is, "Assessor's Parcel 3915-048001B, containing .95 acres." That's the further clarification of the description of the parcel. That's the reference in the motion, "further described." Mr. Duffy.
The motion does not mention the power of eminent domain, and it will not be exercised for two reasons. Number one, the motion does not contain a request for any money. In order to take by eminent domain, you need money. There's no money here. Also, to take by eminent domain, you require a two-thirds vote. The motion to authorize negotiation only requires a majority vote, so there's no question of eminent domain here at all.
Okay, Mr. Clark.
Peter Clark, Precinct 1. I'd like to speak in favor of this article. I think this is a strategic piece of land that we ought to have the opportunity to take a look at. It sits above Little Pond Place, which is 40 units of affordable housing. I'm not sure where the other 110 are, but the 40 at Little Pond Landing might well be made more secure if the town were, in fact, controlling that piece of land. So whether it's for parking or other municipal purposes, I think it's important to take a look at this piece of property. I support the motion.
Okay, Ms. Segal.
Deborah Segal, Precinct 6. In addressing this, as you'll see, I'm actually going to be addressing both of these articles. We have a transportation problem on the Cape. It's going to get much worse when two new bridges are built, which seems to be a done deed. It's going to get even, it's going to also get worse when we build new parking lots to make parking more accessible to more people. The congestion in this town, everybody knows, has gotten increasingly worse year by year, and since the selectmen, select persons wanted advice on this, I would just like to talk for the many people who are unhappy about the increase in congestion in our town. Thank you. And I urge you to vote this down.
Okay, Mr. Cook.
I am in favor of the parking part, and as a person who works downtown, I can see that impact daily, especially in the summer. My concern with the Worcester Court lot is, of course, the intersection of Springbars Road and Worcester Court, which is currently only a two-stop sign intersection. And with increased cars, naturally more traffic. And it's already challenging in the summer trying to cross, across Springsbars, going across Worcester Court, looking both ways, make sure nobody's gonna plow you down. So I'm hoping that's addressed, too.
Okay, Mr. Turkington.
Eric Turkington, Precinct 1. I want to commend Julian for taking on this idea of a shuttle bus to move people around. We've talked about that kind of thing for a long time in this town. We've never done it, so I think that's a good idea. I think talking to the RTA about how to get the buses up and running is also a good idea. But I don't think buying this lot is a good idea. Given that the idea is to have a shuttle and a transportation, those decks should be put in a row before we go out and buy a piece of land to park the cars in. You know, we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the schedule, we don't have anything, and you want to buy a piece of land. This particular piece of land is assessed at $365,000 for one acre, and you can be sure the owners will think it's worth more than that. I looked up on Realtor.com all the empty pieces of land that are for sale in Falmouth right now. This is the second most expensive per acre of all the land that's being currently for sale in Falmouth. So, I say, go ahead with the bus, go ahead with the shuttle. We could do this in school lots. We have the Lawrence School Lot, we have the Morse Pond School Lot. There's lots of ways to do this without spending that amount of money on the second most expensive piece of land in town.
Mr. Netto.
Joe Netto, Precinct 9. Could I please have the slide up of Mr. Suso's presentation? I think all of you know where this is, a corner of Randolph and Springbars. From this lot, you can walk to the Falmouth Mall, where Cappy's, as you see to the left, that makes, I'm sure you'll know it when I mention that parcel there. So what do we use that plaza for? It's got hundreds of spots. Well, when Falmouth High School football was played at Gufflor, that's where the overflow parking would go. On 4th of July, if you go to the Heights, you see that that parking lot in the Plaza is filled. The Plaza lets everyone use that at no cost whatsoever to the taxpayer. So there's plenty of parking, and that would be to the west. If you leave that lot and again walk and go to Walmart, there's another plaza with hundreds of parking spots there. Now, if I could have Mr. Suso's presentation slide, the words. How many of you are aware, right now, that the, I gotta use the right word, the RTA, the transportation system, the RTA routes, already stop at those two plazas? I've followed that bus numerous times. That's not gonna be invented, that already exists. So if somebody want, now, what we don't have is the RTA or any Falmouth, or the Chamber of Commerce and the Beach Committee organizing a parking shuttle system for maybe, again, the high school lots, which we already own, to the beaches. I'm sure that's something that would be handled between private commerce and public government, hand in hand. We, to call this, buying this parcel to improve the downtown parking, is a misnomer. At the precinct meetings, we were told that these two articles were to look at the possibilities. I don't think it's interesting when Mr. Haylen got up that we now see, of course, it's the recommendation that we vote on. So this recommendation is to acquire this parcel. This didn't get brought up in Article 11 last night, it got brought up tonight. We have better ways to spend the taxpayers' money than buying a piece of property that we don't have any idea what it costs, as Mr. Turkington said, he's done some homework, the highest expensive piece of property in Falmouth. And this is not gonna alleviate any parking on downtown. I'd bet the rest that are here on this head on that one. Thank you.
Ms. Lichtenstein.
Leslie Lichtenstein, Precinct 8. Last night's article was for a parking lot that is a parking lot and will never be anything but a parking lot. Here we have a piece of commercially zoned property, which could potentially be a business, which could pay taxes to the town of Falmouth. I don't think we should take a potential tax-paying parcel out of our tax rolls. I agree, we need off-street parking, but if you're gonna bus people to beaches, you don't want to bus them from downtown. You can have a parking lot that's out of town, if you're just worried about busing people to the town. This is just the wrong place to put a parking lot. Thank you.
Mr. Lemay.
Joe Lemay, Precinct 9. Last night, I told you that on Article 11, 94% of my constituents told me to vote no, but it was an ambivalent no, because they realized a parking lot downtown might be useful when there are events, it's really hard to find a parking place. On Article 12, can't say 100%, because one voted no opinion, but of the ones that voted with an opinion, 100% voted no on this property. They saw no reason that we need that parking when you could just park at the Plaza. If we truly did want to negotiate some lease for beach parking, maybe we can negotiate something, a portion of the Plaza out front, where people would see it and know it's there, the tourists could stop there, get on the bus, and go to the beach. I don't think tourists are gonna get on the bus to go to the beach, but maybe they would. So, when my constituents spoke to me about Article 12, they were more adamant that we should not get this property. Okay?
Okay, Ms. Freitag.
Good evening. Melissa Freitag, Precinct 6. I just wanted to re-point out to people that this is merely allowing Mr. Suso to look into acquiring this particular parcel, but it's not just for parking, it says for municipal purposes, which could ultimately, I mean, if the town ultimately acquires this parcel, whether it's through leasing or through purchasing, we could use it for open space if we, you know, needed it. We could use it for a flood zone, when something happens, we could use it for affordable housing. It doesn't have to be for parking it, because we don't actually have anything negotiated. Okay? If the price is too high, town meeting will reject it. I do have a question, though, about the prior use, an earlier use of the parcel. Was it not once a car wash, and is there any indication of environmental contamination there? And also, if I may, through the moderator, the previous speaker, I am really curious what your sample size is. How many neighbors do you ask? 21. 21, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just wanted to clarify, several speakers have suggested that the clear intent is to acquire and take this property off the tax rolls. That is not what is being proposed, in fact, in some very preliminary discussions with the owner. This parcel is only available for lease, so leased property remains fully taxable and would not be coming off the tax rolls. So I just wanted to clarify that piece of information.
Okay, Mr. Jones. Nope, you're all set. Okay. Mr. Hargreaves? I'll put you back on the list. Go ahead, Mr. Hargreaves.
Peter Hargreaves, Precinct 9. Just to balance the discussion, I'd like to rise in support of this article. And every comment I've heard here is entirely valid in the world as we know it today, but I'd ask my colleagues to think more strategically about Falmouth as we develop and grow. If you think, if you had been to any of the form-based zoning presentations dealing with Davis Straits, one of the principles is to put parking and other utility-type services behind the development, to maintain the character of our town and to extend the character of Main Street further up and into Davis Straits and beyond. And so, I would like to applaud the administration for thinking strategically about how to position ourselves to deliver a really excellent project, to have an organized growth and maintains and improves the character of our town. And I'd ask my colleagues here to consider that as a possibility for what we're accomplishing here. This land is a valuable asset in conjunction with the rest of that area, which would be completely redeveloped, as has been presented by the planning board on several occasions as a hypothetical use of form-based zoning, so.
Okay, Ms. Putnam. Mr. Netto, you're on the list again. Mr. Neto, you're on the list again.
Rebecca Putnam, Precinct 9. I would ask that you vote this down. You guys just went through last night with a property on Walk White Highway with finding out that there was a lot of stuff in a house that nobody knew about. Now you've got a piece of property that was used, as was stated, as a car wash. That could be a major 21E problem. And I would also like to ask that this be a roll call vote.
Recorded roll call?
Yes.
All interested in having a recorded roll call vote, please stand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, Okay, sufficient number haven't arisen when we take the vote on this, it will be a recorded 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100, 101, roll call vote. 102, 103, 104, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, 112, 113, 114, 115, 116, 117, 118, Okay, Mr. Patamas?
Yes. Jerry Patamas, Precinct 1. Friend of my father's once said, "You take property when it's available, not when you need it." Now this, I think the selectmen and Mr. Suso have heard all the concerns about intersection, 21E and things like that. And when they come back, they will probably have that well in hand. The other thing is, this is a commercial property, there's nothing to prevent it from being a 40B. And if you look around, people are acquiring large parcels of land for high density and they're not always friendly to the neighborhood. So I urge support. I think yesterday we were critical that people don't plan. All this is, is a planning effort to come back to us and say, "These are the pros and cons." And since this is a lease, I don't think we're looking at a large expenditure to purchase it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Connolly?
Hi, Annie Connolly, Precinct 6. So, I wanted to follow up a little bit more with Mr. Hargraves' points about the Davis Straits reset project. Wasn't there also a fairly rigorous Cape Cod Commission study done on this whole, I don't know, streetscape, whatever we want to call it, in anticipation of Falmouth Housing Corp's housing project on Springbars Road? And if so, does that shed any light about, or any points about additional parking and things like that, Mr. Suso, or the planning board?
I don't have that information at my fingertips. We'd have to secure that, which we'd be happy to do. I don't know if our town planner would have any further insight, but as to those specifics, I don't have that at my fingertips. But it's an excellent point.
Okay, Ms. Brega?
Not to belabor the point, but again, as we've heard, both, it's in the article and then we've heard from Mr. Suso, we're looking at most likely a lease situation. There's no money that's attached to this. This just gives us the ability to sort of suss out whether or not this is something that can work for us. As far as directing people who come to visit us, the many people, particularly in the summer, the Chamber and other organizations that help sort of move people around our community to keep our small businesses alive, that really depend on our summer tourism. I know it's a crowded place in the summer, but it wouldn't be the community that we love the rest of the year if we didn't put up with that. That's just where we live. But the Chamber and those folks cannot direct individuals who come to visit our town to just haphazardly park at the plaza or in some overflow parking by Walmart and get on an RTA bus. I mean, we have to have a plan, there has to be some organization. And that's what this is trying to do. Look at ways that we can relieve the pressures from that downtown Main Street area where people, we've all done it, circle for a very long time trying to find a place to park when you want to have lunch, you need to go to the hardware store, sometimes you need to go to Town Hall. Alleviate some of that intense pressure. And again, this may only be a temporary solution as we look at sort of further options. We're having our Transportation Committee reconstituted, Transportation Management Committee. And so, you know, we're just trying to have options to present back to the town, to town meeting, to this body, to think about how we address some of the concerns that we hear about all the time, that Ms. Siegel is raising, and that we, you know, really just to be forward-thinking in a way that's cost-effective and a lease potentially could be. This doesn't commit us in any way.
Okay, to my left, yep.
Hi, Ellen Venditti, Precinct 3. I happen to live in the vicinity of this area, I live off of Maravista. My neighbors are all pretty much concerned about the impact in the traffic volumes when Little Pond Place populates. So I think it's a little premature to discuss the potential even of putting a parking lot in that vicinity until we see what happens when that opens up. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Neto?
Mr. Moderator, if we're going to be voting on the recommendation, and after Mr. Suso just mentioned again that this would be a lease, then how come the word "purchase" appears twice in the recommendation? Shouldn't we be taking the words, you know, said acquisition to be by lease or purchase? Shouldn't we take the words "purchase" out of there, then if we're only interested in leasing this? Because right now, the way I read this, if we vote this, which we hope we don't, they're gonna have the option of either/or. So if it's only by lease, I feel we should be taking the word "purchase" out of the recommendation. Do you have opinions?
So you have an amendment to remove "purchase"?
Well, yes, I'd make the amendment.
Okay, so there's an amendment to remove "or purchase" from the last sentence. Second to the last line. Neto. Yep, so it would say, "said acquisition to be by lease and with the necessary funding to be subject to future town meeting appropriation."
Correct, that's the amendment that I'd like to make, Mr. Moderator, thank you.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Yep, Mr. Neto?
I would like to suggest leave-in, purchase-in. It gives more flexibility. You're gonna come back to the town meeting anyways for either lease or purchase, so I'd say vote down the amendment and then let's vote on the article.
Okay, so let's take a vote on whether or not to remove the word "or purchase." All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
It's a matter of the chairs that the noes have it by a majority, and we go back to the underlying main motion. Next on my list is Mr. Donahue.
Bob Donahue, Precinct 3.
You're on the list. Okay, you're on my list, you're on my list. Keep it up, you won't speak at all tonight. Go ahead.
Bob Donahue, Precinct 3. I want to remind you folks that this used to be an automobile dealership. So, it was Falmouth Chevrolet when I first, it was right next door.
All right, folks, let him say what he wants to say so we can vote on this, because Mr. Latimer still wants to speak.
Also, this property has been up for sale, or leased, or whatever, for over eight years. And why, why wouldn't some business be interested in that over eight years for $350,000? Let's put another 300 on it for $650. That, that's a pretty good deal for that lot, isn't it, for a business? There must be something radically wrong, is what I'm saying with that property. I don't think the town should get involved. Or if we do get involved, I would like to make sure that we have soil samples and all the rest of it, to make sure that we're not buying a toxic dump. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Latimer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm in support of this article, but I wanted to address two points that were brought up. I wasn't initially, wasn't even going to speak, but the first is eminent domain. Eminent domain just simply means that the town or the government has higher domain over any property. So, when we acquire property by eminent domain, that's how we acquire property. It doesn't have to be a taking. That's in the Constitution that when the town acquires, takes property by eminent domain, means it has to pay fair compensation, and has to be for public use. But the town can also, in fact, this property here that we're standing on was acquired by eminent domain back in the 1950s, but it's called Lawrence School and was Lawrence High School because the Lawrence family donated it. So eminent domain is not a bad word and it's not a hostile word. It's a taking that is hostile. So I think people should understand that. The second point I wanted to make, you know, a friend and I were driving around down Cape, and we noticed how many traffic lights there are in downtown Hyannis and throughout the town of Barnstable. And that got us thinking, well, how many traffic lights are there in Falmouth? So we counted them, I think there are 11. And with the increase of traffic that we've been having here, you know, we start, started thinking about light at intersections, and this one in particular. We've heard that, well, yes, there already is a problem there, yes, that's true. And that's going to be true no matter what goes on that parcel, it's going to get worse. That would be a prime place to start putting in, you know, traffic lights where they're needed. And so that's not an argument against this article, it just raises an issue that we should be dealing with. Thank you.
Let's queue up the slide for the recorded roll call vote. Okay, all members present that want to vote yes signify by pressing 1A, all those opposed 2B. By a counted vote of, I can't read it, to 92, it passes. What's that number? 115? By a count of vote of 115 to 92, the article passes. Article 14, Finance Committee for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 14 as recommended.
As recommended. This is to vote to transfer $2,500,000 from Certified Free Cash for the purpose of initiating the process of disposition of the turbines, which include dismantling, relocation, engineering, permitting, and other related costs. Mr. Suso?
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Article 14 deals with the proposed disposition of the wind turbine and options therein. Relocation of both turbines to sites outside of Falmouth. A, to seek financial benefit to offset the cost of dismantling and construction debt. Relocation of Wind 2 outside of Falmouth and potentially repurposing Wind 1 for cell tower or other communications purposes. That's another option that the selectmen have noted and is part of our exploration. Also, an option could be the sale of the existing components of one or both wind turbines as well. Our best-case scenario would be that the town avoids having to repay the Clean Water Trust for the original grant for Wind 2, the amount remaining approximately $3.5 million. That, to satisfy that would require that the Wind 2 be operated as an energy efficiency project somewhere. No guarantees on that, but that would be our intent. The town receives some revenue from a new turbine operator, again, a best-case scenario. Finally, it's unrealistic to expect a new turbine operator to come forward and front $2.5 million in cost to dismantle and store both Wind 1 and Wind 2. The actual cost will be determined as per requirements of state statute through a competitive procurement process. Our consultants, Weston and Sampson, have provided the estimate. There've been copies provided at all the precinct meetings as well as out front last night and this evening. The estimate is $2.3 million. It's quite a detailed estimate. We've not put it on a PowerPoint slide because there are many sub-elements to it, as those of you who have reviewed it have seen. A request for qualifications or proposals will be forthcoming. It will attract more interest if the town has the funds to execute the portion that we know we need to undertake. Also, as we have stated in the past, additional funds may be further required, which will have us returning to town meeting, asking for your support for a future step as well, dependent upon how procurement unfolds. There will be future updates presented to both the selectmen and town meeting as well. Thank you for your consideration of supporting this critical next step in moving forward with taking care of business.
Okay, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a presentation to be put up. My name is Ron Swig, I'm from Precinct 1, and I would like to actually propose a motion regarding this, this particular article. And I have a printout. Do you have my presentation? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, this works. Okay, basically, I'm raising three essential questions here, there are more that I have, that I've been approached about. But one of them is that, you know, on page 2 of your booklet, there's a guideline about, is this the tip of the iceberg? Now, Mr. Suso gave us some ideas about what the ultimate cost could be, but now it's estimated just to take them down and store them, it's $2.5 million. And then if we dismantle them, if the town, if the town dismantles them, what are the risks? And then there was a vote in 2013 concerning the, the, the funding, the, the removal of the turbines. So tip of the iceberg, $2.5 million. Now, that could be used for a lot of different things in town, such as, you know, we've got this Article 23 coming up. If it passes, the senior, the old senior center or the current one would need probably, if it were transferred to the veterans of foreign wars, it would probably need some little upgrading. But the thing is, is that this is only for, for the dismantling and storage of the turbine. There's a repayment, then, in addition to that, there's no explanation of, detailed explanation of other potential costs. Some estimates have been $8 million. I've seen in the enterprise from 2015 that the town manager's office, I said it could be as much as $12 to $15 million in total, and if they're not returned to operation. There's other, you know, uncertainty on other future costs, relocation and establishment, especially if no buyers or partners come forward. Now, the $2.5 million, right now, it costs the town $35,000 a year to maintain the turbines, to take care of them. $35,000, that's the equivalent in $2.5 million. If you do the math, it's 71 years of cost, okay? The average time that people live in their homes in the United States, according to the National Builders Association, is 13 years. Now, we're already about 10 years into the turbines here, so what's happening with the community there, we don't know. What we do know is that one of the homes, one of the complainant's homes sold and it was bought, and we haven't heard a peep from the new buyer since. Dismantling the turbines by town risks, okay? They could get damaged, there could be improper dismantling and storage, they could be, you know, found to be unacceptable by potential buyers or partners because of that process. And it's much better to involve potential buyers or partners directly in advance of dismantling. dismantling the turbines. And now, the third point is, some of you, many of you probably remember the vote in 2013. Things have changed since then. Again, a lot of house people may be moving in and out of the area, but, but the, we had a ballot question. The people of the town voted not to remove, not to finance removing the turbines. And it was by a two-thirds majority, no. 6,001 no to 2,940 yes, according to the town records. All precincts, all precincts voted no. So what I'd like to, before I can move on to the motion, I think that, I think, I think I would just move on to the motion that I would like to put forward. And the motion is, on Article 14, is, I, Ronald D. Swig, Precinct 1, move that the town vote to support the Board of Selectmen placing a question on the ballot, seeking the vote of the town in advance of appropriating any sum of money on whether to approve initiation of the process of disposition of Wind 1 and Wind 2 municipal wind turbines at Falmouth Wastewater Treatment Facility on Blacksmith Shop Road, which could include dismantling, relocation, engineering permitting, storing, and other related costs, and to determine how the same shall be raised and by whom expended, or do or take any other action on the matter. So, but what I'm trying to say here is that this town voted overwhelmingly not to finance the removal of the turbines in 2013. So I think it's well worth, once again, to, to approach the town, put a question on the ballot, and see what the town thinks. We have, there's no harm in keeping them where they are, and at that expense of annual maintenance, it isn't a, you know, if it takes 10 years, what would that be? $350,000. If something, you know, came up or something we're able to change in that time with climate change and other risks to the town, we're talking about millions of dollars in coastal resiliency costs, et cetera. So anyway, I appreciate your consideration of this motion. If you don't like this motion, then just vote the article down. But thank you very much.
Okay, so we have a motion, and this is to support the Board of Selectmen placing a question on the ballot. So town meeting doesn't have the legal authority to place it on the ballot, but you can support them, recommend it. The decision whether or not to put a question on the ballot under statute would be solely that of the Board of Selectmen at one of their future meetings that they duly post. So I just want to make sure everybody understands, this motion would be a sense of this body that you'd like the selectmen to put something on the ballot, but we do not bind the selectmen, we don't have the legal authority to bind the selectmen to put it on the ballot. So this would support them in their deliberation to do such. Okay. So discussion on just this amendment for now. Did you, were you still? Yep. Yeah, that's correct. Yep, there's no money spent. This would be just place it on the ballot, and then you'd have to come back for the money. That's correct. Yep. Mr. Patamus, then Mr. Latimer.
I had a quick question on history. I think the court orders say we can't use them. But I think it's a zoning requirement, and the building commissioner has said, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is to Mrs. Suso, our town council, that we have to come up with a plan to dismantle them by date certain. And I don't know if we've given a date certain. I think to leave them running would require...
Okay, Mr. Duffy, I'll answer that for you.
Uh, okay.
Yep, Mr. Duffy.
You want to finish, Mr. Patamus?
Uh, to leave them running, I think, would require, standing would require an amendment to the current zoning bylaw that says if something's inactive for a certain period of time, I think it's 12 months or two years, it has to be dismantled. Those are all procedural issues. Thank you.
The status is, the appeals court said we cannot run them. We filed a petition with the Supreme Judicial Court for further appellate review. That was denied. So the final judgment of the courts is that we can't run them. There was then a request made to the building commissioner to order them removed. He directed the town manager to implement a plan to remove them. I think this article is complying with that directive from the building commissioner. As to when they're to be removed, I don't think a date has absolutely been set, but it's going to be sometime in the future.
I wish it was sometime in the past, but, Mr. Latimer.
I support this amendment, and I would point out that Mr. Swig has told us what his polling sample is. It's 6,000 to 3,000, to 2,000. That's very significant. That was the voice of our voters, people that vote for us six years ago. They ought to be given a chance to weigh in again on this question. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion on the amendment. Ms. Lichtenstein, then Mr. Smolowitz.
I'd like to ask for a roll...
With the, with the microphone, please.
Ms. Lichtenstein, precinct eight. I'd like to ask for a roll call vote on this motion.
Okay, recorded roll call vote. All those interested in a recorded roll call vote, please stand. One, two, three, four, five. Yep. What's the point of order? What's the point of order?
Is there only an amendment? I'm sorry.
For the roll call vote? The recorded roll call vote would be on the motion that's on the floor, so this would be for the amendment. If you want to do it on the main motion, you'd have to request it when we're back on the main motion. So all those interested, please stand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. Just made it. By 20, we'll queue a slide when we're ready to vote on the amendment. Okay, so that was Lichtenstein, and Mr. Smolowitz was next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ron Smolowitz, precinct eight. To the maker of the motion, I'm interested in the rationale. And the reason I bring that up is, we're, from what I understand, is that we have to take this down. There is some requirement, legal requirement, that we have to remove this. Is that correct, Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
But however, we could repurpose one and make it a cell tower, and then we don't have to take it down.
You have to take the turbine down, you can leave the pole up.
Not if we stick an antenna on it or something. I mean, I, if we don't call it a wind turbine, if we call it, you know, I grew up near Coney Island, we make a parachute jump out of it. And make some money off the damn thing. I, I, I mean, it's, it's all a part of the rationale. I don't know what's driving the process, is my question. And what the rationale is, in this case, it's to leave it up, so there must be some long-term rationale to leave it up. Are we going to make parachute jumps or another cell, two cell towers?
We do a zip line between the two of them.
Woo! But we'll need parking.
Well, shuttle people in from here, what the heck? Mr. Bushy, can we use your parking lot for the new zip line? Mr. Swig. Do you want to answer the question? What's driving this motion?
Oh, driving the motion, well, basically, one of the main things is, is that we, as the town, we are representing a population of almost 35,000 people, and we had this vote by the vote, by the voters before. And I think it's, it's really important to get, return that consideration to our, the people who we are representing in this body. And there's no harm in that. I think it would just basically make it very clear what the sentiment of the town is, and that we might very well save, maybe not 2 million, maybe only, 2.5 million, we may save $2 million on this thing, because it may be that by the time we, you know, 10 more years pass, 10, 15 years pass, we're still ahead of the game, and maybe it would be worthwhile to starting them up. And there may be a change in sentiment in the neighborhood, and there may be a, the opposition may actually disappear, considering the turnover on average of homes. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
Concerning the amendment, my concern about this is it does push the timetable forward. It's saying, the article, the way it was originally written, would allow us to take the money out of free cash so we could move forward, that when the request for proposal, request for codes comes through, we can actually take steps forward to, to finish up this whole process. If we take this to the ballot, we wouldn't be able to then, we'd get a sense of the town meeting, or a sense of the town, we would then have to come back to the November town meeting to actually get money. So we really would be putting this off a long, long time, and I think it's time to really move forward. The vote that Mr. Swig has been talking about was prior to the town being told by the courts, we can't run these turbines. It's a completely different vote, and our job as representatives of town meeting is to make these decisions for the town. We don't always have to run back to the individuals. We can represent our town the way we've been voted to do so.
Okay, Ms. Segal. Ms. Segal? You're all set?
I have some different, it's a little disjointed. I, we've, we've been in touch with Colorado, the turbine companies, Montana. We took a trip this summer to do the Lewis and Clark Expedition and ended up doing turbines. First of all, these vests, you said store them. Now, you can't store them, I don't think, because what I found out, and I have it, I have it documented, these are antiquated. They were built in 2004. It's the old engineering. The gearboxes break continually on them. They have a 15-year limit. That's what they found. And we got interested in it because when we crossed the country, which we've done so many times, first, we saw all of these beautiful wind farms. They're gorgeous. Next time we went, some of them would, just some of them did not work. Then, more didn't work. The next year, they were like a quarter working. This last time, we saw many, many unworking. They're not working at all. And then we started to do some research, and it said that 12,000 of these, these wind turbines, the old ones like we have, are being trashed. In Casper, Wyoming, they're, they've got a good waste place, and they, what they do is, they grind up the blades, and then they use all that metal to sell, but they have a great big place where the turbines are placed. So they grind up the blades, and they have technology to do that, which is quite interesting. They cannot sell the parts to these old things. They don't want them. People do not want them because when someone wants a wind turbine, they do not buy one of these old things, the old engineering. They use the state-of-the-art turbines. So if we wanted a turbine placed somewhere, which I hope we will not ever do that again, but if we were, we would go to the state-of-the-art, which actually is a $4 million purchase. So I think we should not store them unless you wanted to put them in a dump heap and bury them, although you'd surely have to be careful about the environment. So first of all, if you want to sell any of the parts, they are not buying these parts. So I think storing them is out of the question. I think we have to get rid of them. The other thing I have a question for, maybe our moderator can tell me. The CEC, you know, notoriously had these in storage and spent a lot of money. In those days, it was called a different name. I can't remember what it was, but anyway, they had to pay a lot of money to store these. They bought them, Wind 1 and Wind 2. They asked many communities if they would like to buy them. No community wanted to buy them. And then Falmouth, of course, did. So what happened was, they did a sound study. They, they, let's see, what did they do? They made a very acoustic, acoustic study, all based by computers, and it was a very serious mistake they made. They miscalculated, and I don't know whether it was on purpose. Couple of people we talked to out west said, no, they, they probably did not make a mistake on, just by an accident. They wanted to get rid of them, and that was the flavor that, that we felt at the time, because they wanted to get rid of them completely. So we bought Wind 1, and then we had the notice one from, from Webb. But anyway, the CEC admitted in a memo in 2013, which was interesting, that it had made a major mistake in the original noise studies prior to the installation of Wind 2. It did not include a detailed acoustic analysis based upon sampling.
Ms. Waitet, your, your four minutes has expired.
Okay. I want to know the question.
Well, your four minutes has expired. I'll put you back on the list. You can speak a second time for two minutes.
Okay. I'd like to know if the CEC is responsible.
Dr. Clark, you're next.
Peter Clark, precinct 1. What I'm confused about is whether going to the ballot, let's assume the, the population voted in favor of some kind of maintenance of those, how does that square with the court action? Would it, would it be a legal step that would override court action, or would it just take us back to court to resolve an issue?
It wouldn't have any effect.
Yep. Can't overturn a decision of the court by a ballot vote. Mr. Brown?
Just like to say that we can't just let this go dragging on forever. The court has ordered Wind 1 to be removed. It's ordered Wind 2 not to operate in its current location. So if there's any hope of these things operating, it'll be in a new location. So I'd like to fund the town manager to look into any possibility of them being used somewhere and become a renewable energy product again. Then perhaps we would be forgiven that loan. If that doesn't turn out to be viable, if nobody wants them, maybe we could have the military come out and do an explosive demolition test.
Is this one? Yes. Laura Peterson, precinct 3. I, I just think it's really important. We had 181 people when we established our quorum tonight. In precinct 3, 652 people voted against dismantling them. And I understand that we want to move past this, but I know how hard it is to store large things. I own a sand and gravel operation, and, you know, it's, it's not easy to, to find places to store things. I would not, it sounds like the only thing we're going to be able to do with these is sell them for scrap metal. If we put it out to vote, why not see if we can get somebody to agree to buy, to use it as scrap metal, to take it and buy it, and then we'll have a number. But I don't think it's fair not to go back to the town and let them have another say on this, because it was overwhelming. And I understand that they cannot operate ever again. But I don't necessarily think I want to spend $2.5 million to take them down, and then who knows how long I have to pay for storage. So I'd rather just have them stay, and it would be a great reminder of what happens sometimes. And you have, mistakes are made, but I don't, I'm not interested in spending $2.5 billion when we don't even know if that will fix the problem. So I think it needs to go back to the voters and let, let them decide.
Okay, Ms. Braga, and then Mr. Suso.
The problem about going back for a vote is that it's just an empty vote. So we're asking the town to weigh in on something that ultimately has no bearing on our final, you know, resolution of this issue. We cannot, through, you know, an act of vote, overturn a court judgment. It's just, it's, it would be sort of putting a false option in front of the public, and I think, you know, frankly, sort of delaying a process that has been very long and very difficult for this community. The issue is, we are no longer in a position where we have many options available. We have a court order that directs us to do a particular thing, and we have to take these down. We don't have an exact timeline, but we have to have a plan to do so. This town, there's nobody up here, there's no town manager, there's no board of selectmen, there's no town meeting member that wants to maximize what we spend. The goal is to minimize it, but we have some sort of expert weigh-in on, you know, what this might cost. The idea of storing it, we're talking about all the options available. Ideally, we've seen what town manager presented, what we would ideally like to do, try to put this in another community, minimize the costs that will bear, both in terms of taking it down, and then perhaps not have to pay back, you know, the loans because it's, it's being run in another community perhaps. But we... But we have to address it, whatever that final resolution is. And I think that we're just sort of moving in a circle for asking to go back to the public to ask them to vote on something that they have no control over. So, I hope that we, nobody here wants to spend $2.5 million. This board worked really hard and took a lot of steps to try to prevent us from coming to the position that we're in now. But the process played out, the judicial process played out, and we have to live with the result of that. Unfortunately, it's a significant burden to this community, but it's something that I think it's irresponsible for us as town meeting members not to address it.
Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I appreciate Selectwoman Braga's comments on this that helped clarify the issue. I do want to mention a couple of other things. We do not, doing nothing is not a reasonable option. Doing nothing increases the likelihood that I'm going to get a bill tomorrow for $3.5 million. And so, doing nothing and spending $31,000 or $35,000 a year is not an option. We're also paying on bonds for Wind One. That's going to go on for a number of years. Those are decisions made in the past, but we have a responsibility to take appropriate action based upon the circumstances that the cards were dealt, and that's what we're attempting to do. No one is suggesting that if town meeting approves this article, that these turbines are going to go into permanent storage somewhere. This is merely the next step in a multi-step procurement process. We need to be able to demonstrate that a, a reasonable amount of funding is in place to dismantle these turbines, and in the best-case scenario, being able to turn them over to another party, whether it's for scrap, whether it's relocation to another site that might be able to generate some revenue from which the town and taxpayers would benefit, or some other alternative. But our failing to move forward reasonably is going to take all these options away, and we're going to face some much more difficult scenarios. So, I brought that to you in that spirit, that we need to send the, the message out, including to the Clean Water Trust, that we are taking responsible action in the hope that we may be able to find a location where these turbines can again operate. Otherwise, we're rolling the dice and running the risk of much larger expenses, and we, I think that would be inappropriate and irresponsible. I'm also not suggesting that we would be spending this money tomorrow. Again, we need to have it in hand and asking for that appropriation based on a reasonable approximation from our consultant so we can take the next few procurement steps that we've already outlined, and we appeal to town meeting in that spirit.
Okay, Ms. Moran? Ms. Moran?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, I want to just focus on the money for a minute. So, the $3.5 million is something that our legislators, Mr. Viera included, as well as Senator DiMascio, have worked extremely hard in trying to get forgiven from the state, given the fact that Falmouth was a pioneer in this effort. And now, you, you look all around at the harbors, and there's a lot of optimism about more clean energy and possibilities with ocean turbines. And so, part of this process is to show the state the impact financially that being a pioneer with these turbines has had on this community, not just the money, the cost of repurposing, dismantling of which is part of it, but also the cost to this community. And this is something that has been going on for years. We have been advocating. This is part of the next step to move that effort forward, and I, for one, am optimistic that that is still a possibility with this state, and that's one reason why I would move that this be brought forward, this long-term plan, take the next step.
Ms., Ms. Toby? Yep? Yeah, we're, it's drifting a little bit, but we're also going to take the vote very quickly when we're done with the amendment. So, Ms. Toby? This is whether or not to go to the ballot and not appropriate the money. Is that what you want to talk about, or you want to talk about the main motion? No? Okay. So, on the main motion, on the amendment still? Yep? And the, Ms. Potamus, you're, I got five people on the list. If you're going to talk about the amendment.
Yeah, about the amendment. I just want to mention that the two turbines were put up under the old bylaw, and I don't think there's a constraint on how long they can stand there and not operating, but that's, that's, that's one question. The other one is that, to my understanding, the court order only instructed the town to not operate the turbines. It didn't instruct the town to take them down. And, and so, that was, that was basically that. Again, if the complainants all leave the area, then who has standing with regard to that, and things could change. We don't know about that either. The final point is, I'd just like to read something because I, that Mr. Jones reminded me of. Thank you very much, Selectman Jones. I appreciate that. In, on September 23rd, 2015, Mr. Jones was quoted in the Falmouth Enterprise saying that, that basically, that the, the turbines would, would create a huge financial loss. And the direct quote is, "At this point, I have no idea how we would cover the financial loss. We don't have the money to cover it. It would mean tough choices," he said. And I think that that hasn't changed. We still don't know how much money is going to be needed. Okay? We know the $2.5 million to take it down. Then, there are the, the, the loans and, and, and to, to be repaid, and who knows what else there is? It could be a number of things, but a quote from the town manager's office around the same period said that the, the cost to take them down could amount to something between $12 to $15 million to the town. Now, that may have been cut back a little bit through some forgiveness of some of it, but it is not $2.5 million. It's probably closer to 10. The $8 million is based on basically the loans that would have to be returned. So, I think that we really need to, to look at this and consider what, what, what's the implications of this. Again, $2.5 million tip of the iceberg. Keep that in mind. We have no idea when this, when we may end up right beached on that iceberg. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Potamus, on the amendment?
Excuse me. Is the building commissioner here? I would like to assert that it's the building commissioner, the zoning article, there's a zoning article, that states a structure has to come down if not used in an appropriate period of time. And that was, I think, I know the gentleman's name, why he filed that decision to the building commissioner, so that the next step, if we don't do anything, would be probably appeal that, and we'll go to court. So, I think we're talking about the courts, but it's our own zoning bylaw that requires us to take them down. The other thing, and forgive me, the lifecycle cost done a few years ago included, and this was done by Weston, no, I think it was Weston and Sampson up on the base, included scrap metal of the turbines. If you look in it, it's not a hell of a lot, but, excuse me, it's, scrap metal cost, there's estimates around that could be determined. The final thing is that, I guess, people don't realize that at the time, we put up the most efficient turbine around. We bought a Cadillac. It's still a used Cadillac, but it's not obsolete. It was the most efficient turbine in the Vestas operating scheme. Vestas has thousands of them going. Yes, and this is to the fact that no one will want them. Yes, they have, they had a design problem with the nepera or the pot that burns out, but that's a small percentage of the total number out there. I urge that we vote this down because I don't think we've had all the facts necessarily presented in that. I agree with the Selectman that we have to move forward, and if it's more than $2.5 million, we'll be back here. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
I'd just like to remind the town of an opinion I've given to the board of selectmen and the town manager in the past. When you look at the court judgment, when you look at the zoning bylaw in place when we built them, and when you look at the amended zoning bylaw that you approved a couple of years ago, here is the situation. Wind Two will never operate again in the town of Falmouth. It's out of town somewhere. Wind One may qualify for a grandfather, may operate someplace else in the town of Falmouth, but it cannot operate where it is. It's got to come down. Those are your facts.
Okay. Ms. Segal, on the amendment?
Deborah Segal, Precinct Six. I'd like to call the question on the amendment, please.
Okay. The motion to close discussion on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by the two-thirds, and we will now take a recorded roll-call vote on the amendment as presented by Mr. Zweig, which is to place this on the ballot and not appropriate any money at this time. All those in favor of the amendment signify by pressing 1A. All those opposed, 2B. By a counted vote of 51 in favor and 156 opposed, the amendment does not pass, and we're back on the main motion. Ms. Toby? Did you want to speak on the main motion? Is she over there?
I just have a question here. If we end up having to take down the wind turbine, since the CEC admitted in a memo in 2013, it had made a major mistake in the original noise studies. Because of this initial serious mistake, wouldn't it seem reasonable for the CEC to accept responsibility for funding the dismantling of this turbine? I don't know. Maybe it's been looked into, but I think we need to look to see if there's some way of getting some funding to help if we do have to take these down. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Harris?
Mary Harris, Precinct Five. I have a question. Did we not send out some requests for letters of interest, and exactly how much interest have we had generated so far from some other place that might take our turbines?
Mr. Suso?
We had a, what I would call a modest response, which we were working with our consultant on, and one of the things that became clear was that the step that we are contemplating and that we have brought to town meeting here this evening with Article 14 is an important step to allow us to have the remainder of the disposition unfold, and that's one of the reasons we're here tonight.
Okay, Ms. Braga?
Just, I know we've said this before, but just to clarify, this board, this administration with the assistance of our state reps, our state senator, secretaries of energy, we've met with them, we have pled our case, we have explained to everyone who would listen, every agency who would listen, every elected official who would listen, what this burden means to our community, and that advocacy continues to go on. There's nobody up here that is going to have any ability to control what CEC decides to do, but for there to be any misunderstanding about the level of work and advocacy that has gone on for many years, from this board, from previous boards, and from this town administration, as well as our representatives, to try and address this issue and mitigate and minimize the harm to this community, I just want people to understand that quite a bit of work has gone on. It continues to go on. We're all taxpayers. We don't want to, this impacts us just like it does every other town meeting member and every other citizen in this community. So, the goal is to, you know, keep these funds for important uses for our community rather than to pay them back if we're able to address that.
Ms. Lestonstein? I did the list.
Precinct Eight. I don't know about you, but the people that elected me, when they talk to me, they say, "Please don't spend any money you don't have to." It seems that it's a bylaw, our town bylaw, that's making us take them down. Excuse me, folks, but aren't we here to approve bylaws? Is it possible to have a change in the bylaw that will allow them to stand up and stay there? I personally think they should stay there, and we should paint them a horrible color to remind people to think before they act. I mean, I think we should go the cheapest way we can. And if, if we can change the by, if we have a change in a bylaw to allow these turbines to stand as a memorial to something we shouldn't have done? Thank you.
Mr. Haylen?
I just had a couple of questions for clarification. The $2.3 million that Mr. Suso spoke of, that is the initial cost, and there could be added costs on top of that. And then, the $3.5 million to get paid back is only real money to us if someone else takes it. Could you just clarify that real quickly?
That's if we don't operate it. When, when we, when we took the ERA grant, the town manager at the time signed a legally binding contract that said, "If you don't operate this turbine, you owe us principal and interest." That was the contract that was signed for the grant to the town of Falmouth. And so, when the court ordered it not to run, the legally binding contract that the town signed said, "You now owe principal and interest."
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. So, if, if I'm correct, this is $2.3 million to dismantle it, store it, et cetera, and we still could owe the $3.5 million if no other community decides to take it from us? Correct?
That could happen.
So, why would we spend that much extra money if they can't be used anyway? Why not just dismantle them, trash them, because it's a big gamble to store them for long periods of time? And what Ms. Whitehead said, it's old technology. We're just going to keep on paying a company to store them forever and then have to pay the $3.5 million back at some point in time?
Ms. Braga?
The, the goal is not to store them. We're just putting all the options there. The goal would be to sell them in any capacity we can. Again, ultimately, the best thing to do is if we can sell them to a community that will run them, we have an argument to make to the CEC that it's still getting the benefit of the contract that we're bound by. That's what we're trying to do. If all we can do is sell them for scrap to try to recoup some amount of money, then that's what we'll do. The goal, I'm sorry.
And it won't cost $2.5 million.
And it, that then may not be $2.5 million, but the goal is not to store these things indefinitely. It's just, we don't have anyone right now, we don't have a buyer waiting to take these off our hands. So, the goal is to have the option to address it because that's what the bylaw requires, and again, we're trying to maximize whatever benefit we can get from it.
And then, one quick follow-up to Mr. Suso's had a modest response. Can we get a number for modest? How many communities actually are interested in this? Because...
I would say we had between six and 10 different entities respond.
So, eight? I mean, that's the average. Okay. I mean, I'd just like to have real numbers when I'm looking at $2.5 million of our tax money. And then, also, real quick, one more question. $2.3 million was the estimate. How many people came out to give that estimate to dismantle them and store them? Just one company, or were there multiple modest amount of companies, or?
I, I don't understand the question, Mr. Moderator.
Did you get more than one quote for the $2.3 million?
That came from our consultant, Weston and Sampson, who's... That came from our consultant, Weston and Sampson, who specializes in that work.
And then, who was the company that put the turbines up in the first place?
The Town of Falmouth had the turbines installed.
And who was the consultant who helped with that process?
There were multiple consultants. One of those was also Weston and Sampson.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Noonan?
A little bit of a concern. We've been asked for years for a little bit more money, a little bit more money, a little bit more money. So, I think before we vote 2.5 million, we might want to know what can it go to? I know we got the 2.5, and we got the 3.5, but is there storage fees? And what would be the term of the storage fees? I think that to get piecemeal requests for money is not helping us to make a decision. I think it needs to be, this is the maximum amount it's going to cost us. We're hoping to do it for this much money. We put out a request for proposal for someone to dismantle it and put it back into operation. This is what they came back and said that they needed. I think it needs a very detailed explanation to spend 2.5 million minimum and then more on top of it. So, I, I would ask you to vote this article down and ask the Town Manager to come back with a detailed plan of what the maximum money is. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Peterson?
Hi, Laura Peterson, Precinct Three. Here's what I'd like to see. I'd like to, since it's certified free cash, take the 2.3, move it to the 3.5, start paying down that debt. Then, if we still want to take down the wind turbines, we use an override, and it goes back to the voters, and let the voters have a shot at it. That way, our principal and interest both go down. We've got the cash. We're addressing the problem. I'm still not convinced that they have to come down. You know, leave them up. So, that way, the town has a say, and then you can do something with it. But let's take the free cash that we have and move it over toward the debt. So, vote this down. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lowell?
Joel, Precinct Five. I'm also the vice chairman of the Finance Committee. Obviously, this is our recommendation from the Finance Committee that we appropriate the 2.5 million dollars for this project. The selectmen and the Town Manager have convinced us this is the right thing to do, it's the right time to do it. Just a couple of thoughts. One is, when you're in a deep hole, none of us want to spend this money. None of us wanted the wind turbines to turn out the way they have, but we need to start digging out of the hole. This is one way to do it. As far as the storage thing goes, imagine that you have a boat. You've had it out all summer, and now you're thinking, "Hmm, I want to sell that boat." Do you leave it out in the mooring all winter, subject to all the storms? Or do you bring it in, winterize the engine, put the cover over it, and then try to sell it in the spring? That's what we're doing with the wind turbines. We're going to take them down, and it'll make it much more attractive to somebody else so they're not wondering whether we'll ever actually take them down. We'll store them. It's the right thing to do. There was really, if on the Finance Committee, we discussed this for a while, but it was definitely a resignation that we have to do this, and it's time to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Shepherd?
Susan Shepherd, Precinct One. We're all sort of dancing around this without taking into account that these things are going to become a hazard. We, if, if we have to take them down, then the sooner we take them down, the better. I personally think it's unlikely that we'll find anybody to buy them. They're already 15 years old. I, sooner is better than later. We don't want to wait for one of those blades to fall off and hit something or somebody.
Okay. Mr. Donald?
I'd like to just kind of go back a little bit here. The federal, the federal stimulus program, ERA, granted Falmouth $5 million free and clear. Now, the money got funneled through Massachusetts, I believe it was the Clean, Clean Water or Water Resource Authority, or whatever it is. Some state agency has converted this free money from the federal government with no strings attached, and they've put their strings on it, and they got, they funneled it to Falmouth. Now, the turbines don't work, and they're expecting us to pay it back. Now, if we pay it back, that is a pure windfall for the state of Massachusetts. 3.5 million or 5 million, whatever we've paid and whatever we continue to pay, it will be a windfall for Massachusetts. Now, when I sat down with Governor, former Governor Deval Patrick, he told me that he wouldn't leave us holding the bag. Unfortunately, he's left, and, and we're holding the bag. And I also, it just seems to me that we're pussyfooting around with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We're negotiating nicely, but what we have to do is play hardball. Don't pay the money back. Tell them, "Come on and get your turbines. Here they are." If you buy a car and finance it and don't pay it, the bank comes after it. Well, let the, let the Commonwealth of Massachusetts come after it. Let's have some pressure, public pressure, on the Commonwealth. This is outrageous. Why should the Commonwealth have a windfall of money? Congress has said it's free and clear. The Commonwealth is going to, I mean, this is crazy. The second point is, why should we spend any more money to take these things down? Once we take them down, you're going to have to store them. You're going to have to find someplace to store them. I mean, we, we don't know what the revenue stream is here. You're asking us to pay 2.5 million. Well, what do we get for our 2.5 million? What comes next? What are they worth? Are we going to get any money for them? Why can't we wait until we have a buyer and have the buyer take the damn things down?
Okay.
I vote, I, I recommend voting this article down.
Okay. The question's going to come on the main motion. This is to transfer the sum of 2.5 million dollars from Certified Free Cash to initiate the process of the disposition of the turbines. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
All, let's cue up a slide. We're going to do it on a recorded vote, or electronic vote, not a recorded vote.
One hour?
Yep.
Hold.
I did. We're, we've been on this one for an hour. It's very clear what the issues are. You all need to decide based on the hour-long conversation whether or not you want to vote to appropriate this money.
So, you screwed it last night, you screwed it again.
The constable's going to get active tonight. Go ahead. Let's cue the slide.
Show some respect. Vote, vote with.
You ready on this slide? Okay. All those in favor signify by pressing 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Article 14, that was Article 14. Article 16, a new main motion from the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 140, Section 3 of the Code of Falmouth relative to licenses and permits by deleting the words "for not less than a 12-month period" and replacing the deleted words with "for not less than a 6-month period." This is an amendment to the original article.
So, the main motion will be as printed, but instead of 12 months, we're going to go not less than 6-month period. Discussion on Article 16. Here and now, the question will come on the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by a majority. Article 17. The recommendation of the Board of Selectmen is indefinite postponement. Mr. Duffey?
Yeah, with a microphone though, please. Macy, I hope you're on the track team at the high school, doing a lot of running. Michael Duffey, Precinct Six. I, I just actually was asked to hold this article for the proponent, because he's not a town meeting member.
Okay.
So, I would defer to, to Nate.
Yeah, so, yeah, so you're going to make a positive motion as well?
Yes.
Yeah. As printed? Okay. The main motion is as printed. Mr. Holcomb?
I'm Nathan Holcomb. I'm the petitioner for Article 17, which is intended to address the issue that under the current Falmouth Wetlands bylaw, as interpreted and applied by the Conservation Commission, if you have a puddle in your yard or your neighbor does, you can be subject to very stringent regulation. And puddles are not the valuable natural resources that the bylaw is intended to protect. Now, you can't hear me? So, puddle's not my word. It's the word of the Massachusetts DEP, which in explaining its approach to wetlands regulations to differentiate between those areas that serve the interests of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act in a significant way, and areas where small amounts of water may collect occasionally, puddles in effect. Now, there's a very important basic point here, which is that the Massachusetts DEP has a comprehensive set of wetlands regulations. If Falmouth had no bylaw with specific definitions of wetlands, it could just apply those definitions that the Massachusetts DEP has come up with. The town does have the ability to regulate more stringently than the state, and it's done that. The proposal in Article 17 would be a revision to the definition of what's called an isolated freshwater wetland. That's an area where the soil's moist and where, as a result, plants that like moisture tend to thrive. Those aren't necessarily rare or endangered plants. It includes plants like inkberry or winter berry that you can buy at Mahone's. What this amendment would do would be to take the definition of that area, which isn't regulated by the DEP at all, and require that there would be a minimum area of at least 10,000 square feet, or about a quarter of acre, before that would be regulated under Falmouth's law. The amendment's narrow and targeted. It wouldn't affect protection of any other kinds of wetlands, such as vernal pools, where amphibians like frogs or salamanders breed, or water bodies such as lakes, ponds, streams, or estuaries. Now, if you think about the kinds of wetlands that the bylaw is intended to protect, you might think about something like Great Sitwist Marsh. It's a fragile ecosystem. It's a precious natural resource that we should do everything we can to protect. Probably wouldn't think about something like my family's backyard. This is an older photo, but you can see that there's sort of a hill that slopes down, and there's no water there. There usually isn't water, but sometimes during heavy rain, you get some water at the bottom, and as a result, that area counts as an isolated freshwater wetland. You can see at the top, that's where the Conservation Commission wants to install a fence to keep me from going down in that area. And to give you an illustration of how stringent the regulations are, this is a map of my family's property. That little area in green is what counts as a wetland, and because there's a 100-foot buffer surrounding that, the, that's the area outlined in red. That entire area is very stringently regulated. So, it includes most of our family's property and large portions of the neighbor's property, and that will give you an idea of how, you know, people who have these sort of areas in their yards have a great, you know, level of difficulty in dealing with their properties. So, the, this issue was recently discussed on the Conservation Commission. One minority view is that of Mr. Walsh, who said with the present definition, "If you have a wetland the size of my cellphone with a 100-foot buffer, it's 31,416 square feet. We have to do what's best for where our limited resources are." I like to say that we're doing the best for the environment and the residents and citizens of Falmouth both, so I have to vote my conscience and say that the 10,000 proposed is reasonable in accordance with all the other regulations. Now, the, another minority view is that of Mr. Gurney, who said, "If you look at the regs, all you have to do is find a couple of wetland plants, and anything is a wetland." That's an awful stretch. We don't have a way of fixing that right now, because a reg is a reg, and the offering is 10,000 square feet, which is too big, but I think we should recognize that our reg is way too stringent. Now, of course, the Conservation Commission can do something, because it writes the regulations, but it won't absent action by town meeting, because the majority view is that expressed by Mr. Byrd. I think it's far better that there's no limit on the minimum size of a wetland, because it becomes very subjective where it's 10,000 feet, or 100 square feet, or 50 square feet. We're being far more consistent if we stick with our regulations, as they're now defined, and not try to put a minimum size on it, because the minute we do that, there may be some habitat value that we're not protecting. So, according to the majority view, if you have a 1-square-foot area that's moist and hospitable to moisture-like plants, you regulate the 3/4-acre buffer zone that surrounds that. So, that's really like the polar opposite of the Massachusetts DEP's view, and I suggest that Falmouth could come back a little bit more toward the DEP's approach to regulation. One reason is that the status quo wastes tax dollars. There are better uses for our money than regulating puddles in people's backyards. It creates uncertainty for landowners. As stated on the town's website, there's no way to know if your, you know, puddle in your yard counts as a wetland unless you hire a wetland scientist to do testing and have that testing reviewed by the Conservation Commission. That costs thousands of dollars, so obviously, most people with puddles in their yards that look like mine don't do that. As a result, the people who are singled out for enforcement, you know, it's really a result of bad luck, and that's not fair. So, meanwhile, the DEP does keep a map of wetlands. They use a quarter acre as a minimum size for inclusion on the map. This is a, this is an example of an excerpt from that map. That's Sitwist. And as you can see, you know, it shows, shows vernal pools, those are like those white and blue dots, and then wetlands that are outlined in that sort of yellowish-green. These areas that are a quarter acre larger in size would still be regulated. The status quo wastes landowners' resources. It's very expensive to get any project through the system of Conservation Commission approval, so even for a pretty simple project like invasive removal, you can, as, as I know all too well, spend tens of thousands of dollars. That's not reasonable. The status quo threatens property values. If a puddle in your yard can be an issue for you, it could be an issue for somebody who might be interested in buying your, your house. Puddles shouldn't threaten property values for Falmouth homeowners. So, a 10,000-square-foot minimum is, I think, reasonable, and it fits with existing standards. One is the minimum size for an isolated land subject to flooding under the Conservation Commission's regulations. It creates proportionality with that 100-foot buffer zone, which, under the current regulations, is a minimum of 3/4 of an acre, and it's consistent with the 1/4-acre minimum threshold for the DEP's state wetlands map. Ultimately, it's a matter of choosing the right priorities. Falmouth should be using its resources to protect real wetlands, not puddles. Thanks for your consideration.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Jamie Matthews. I'm the chairman of the Conservation Commission. My colleagues and I would like to share with you why we oppose Article 17. Article 17 seeks to eliminate protection to any isolated freshwater wetlands that are less than 10,000 square feet. Wetlands are a distinct ecosystem with special characteristics. Wetlands provide unique ecosystem services for our town. There are more than 350 mapped freshwater wetlands throughout Falmouth that would be affected by this article. Article seventeen seeks to eliminate protection to any isolated freshwater wetlands that are less than 10,000 square feet. Wetlands are a distinct ecosystem with special characteristics. Wetlands provide unique ecosystem services for our town. There are more than 350 mapped freshwater wetlands throughout Falmouth that would be affected by this article. What is a freshwater wetland? A wetland is a distinct ecosystem that is inundated by water either permanently or seasonally, where oxygen-free processes prevail. The primary factor that distinguishes wetlands from other landforms or water bodies is the characteristic vegetation of wetland plants adapted to the unique hydric soils. What characterizes freshwater wetlands? Evidence of hydrology. Wetlands are saturated with water at or near ground surface during some period through the year. Hydric soils, specific soil type, saturated with water that often becomes anoxic. This favors the growth of specialized plants. Wetland plant species. Certain plant species can only live in hydric soils. We call them the obligate wetland species. Other species that can tolerate wetland conditions can also be found. Some common benefits to our environment. Filters. Water that enters the groundwater through wetlands becomes purified because of the bacteria within hydric soils, which removes nitrogen and other pollutants, kidney, if you will. Flood storage. Water can be stored in hydric soils in wetland depressions and absorbed by wetland plants, much like a sponge. Carbon storage. Wetland plants sequester carbon in their roots, and as they decompose, is combined as an element of the hydric soils. Wildlife habitat. Wetlands and their buffers are important habitat for amphibians, insects, birds, and other species that are important in the terrestrial food web. How do wetlands help you? Well, remember, the groundwater becomes your drinking water, wetlands filter out the pollutants. If wetlands are filled, where's the water gonna go? Your basement? Mine? Wetland habitats are probably Falmouth's most important inland habitat for wildlife. Even smaller wetlands with their vegetated buffers serve as an island refuge, linking together these important places, especially for the smaller, less mobile species. You'll note the black box on the right side of this slide, that represents 10,000 square feet, quarter acre. You'll also notice in this slide how many isolated wetlands are in this neighborhood Ed Perry, he's a consulting biologist to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, often quips, "Build your house in a wetland, you got a hobby for the rest of your life. You'll be fighting that water forever." And of course, he can insert what we've already said. Finally, sometimes a puddle is just that, a puddle. It's not a wetland, it doesn't have the hydric soils, it doesn't have the specialized wetland plants, and it's just a puddle. So we ask for your support by voting to protect all of our wetlands. Thanks for your time.
Okay, discussion on the article. Yep, Mr. Latimer.
Richard Latimer, Precinct One. I am against this article that would change the bylaw. 10,000 square feet, that's a damn big puddle. Look at this room. I don't think any of us could jump over it. I'm not gonna add to what the chairman has said, because he's nailed it precisely. We're not talking about size here, we're talking about function. And it is very important that we protect those functions. One of the things that's been happening along with sea level rise is the water tables coming up a little bit, such that if we go down to the end of Walker Street, for example, there are houses down there that are continuously pumping water out of their basements, because the drainage system has not been adequate to carry off the storm drainage that goes into the sound, because the sea level is up. So what we see there is people that have that problem, where the water, they have the hobby of removing water from their basements, create a public nuisance. So it's just bad policy to do anything that would weaken our environmental protections, especially concerning, you know, groundwater and wetland resources. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion.
Vicki Lowell, I just have a procedural question. I know in the past, a couple of times over the years, we've had an article to ask that the town have to approve the wetlands regulations, and my memory is we voted it down every time. So if we did this, are we piecemeal going to get into voting on wetlands regulations when we voted down previously that the town meeting would not be the body that approves wetland regulations? Like subdivision regulations, they would be done by, which are done by the planning board, the wetlands regulations, we said, would be left under the guise of the Conservation Commission, they would have, they have a process for amending them, having public hearings and then voting on the amendments, but I'm just wondering if we're, I think we're in danger of getting into piecemeal amending of wetlands regulations, which, like most regulations, they tend to be intertwined with each other, and once you start changing one thing, you can get in well over your head. So that's my concern. And also, I think that 10,000 square feet, you can argue any dimensional regulation is arbitrary, but I think that is not exactly a puddle. Thank you.
Mr. Duffey, you wanted to...
If you vote to amend the wetlands bylaw, then the Conservation Commission will be challenged to amend their regulations to conform to the bylaw as amended.
Okay, yeah. You got a follow-up? One second, we got a follow-up here, I think.
So we're amending the bylaw and not the regulation, is what you said? Okay, thank you.
You're amending the bylaw, that's correct.
Yeah, Chapter 235 of the...
And then they'll have to amend their regulations to conform to it, as you amended tonight, if you do so amend it.
Okay, we got a microphone over there? Where'd the microphone go?
Charles Rader from Precinct Two. I'm bothered that we're here tonight giving a choice between a regulation that says something the size of a cellphone is a wetland versus 10,000 square feet, which is pretty big. I'm very disappointed that the Conservation Commission was not able to come up with a compromise that was a number that was small enough that it eliminates ridiculous cases, and yet large enough to give us almost all the protection we need. And I'm not prepared to make an amendment, but I would be really pleased if somebody else did, to find the middle ground.
Okay, Mr. Patterson.
I would just like to remind all of us that we have a sole source aquifer. Our freshwater, our drinking water comes out of that aquifer. If we start eliminating these restrictions around our wetlands, what we're inviting is the development of those wetland areas, and that's contamination that's gonna get into our drinking water eventually. This is a protection for us, as well as it is for our natural resources, and one we should not take for granted, because it is our only source of drinking water. We don't have any rivers that flow on to Cape Cod. The rivers that are here come out of that aquifer and flow into our estuaries.
Further discussion on the main motion. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Wendy Vogel, Precinct Four. I think we're all in favor of wetland protection, but I would just like to say that having some quantification of the size, I think, would be very beneficial to homeowners and people who are trying to figure out how to manage their property in the right way, and be good stewards of the land, and having, you know, one water plant, does that mean you have a wetland? It creates a situation where it's always vague, and I think if there were an established size for a wetland, it would also clarify and make Conservation Commission's job easier so that they could focus on the more important wetlands that they have to address. Thank you.
Mr. Latimer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Richard Latimer, Precinct One again. As the chairman of the Conservation Commission quite cogently explained, it's not an issue of size, it's an issue of function and form, and what the wetland consists of. Every wetland that is a wetland by definition, based on its function, is important, no matter how big and no matter how small it is. We don't need a cookie cutter size limit, because that is counterproductive, it doesn't give us the protection we need. If it's not a wetland, in terms of its characteristics, if it is a puddle, it doesn't come under the bylaw, no matter how big it is. So I would just suggest that we just vote this one down. Thank you.
Okay, a question will come on, Ms. Bissler.
Hi, Wendy Bissler, Precinct Two. I would like some clarification from the Conservation Commission, please. As I recall, in the regulations, isn't there a certain percentage of the water body in question have to be covered by wetland plants? It's just not like there's one wetland plant in this body of water. Isn't there a certain percentage of the area has to be covered? And it's, and if you could also clarify this discussion about whether a wetland the size of a cellphone qualifies or not? Thank you.
Scott.
So the key issue is, we mentioned that there are three aspects to it. One is saturation, all or part of the year. The second is hydric soils, which are very specific soils containing bacteria, anaerobic bacteria, that can basically remove nitrogen, remove, denitrify groundwater. And the third is very specific obligate wetland plants. And so, in an area, it's unlikely anybody in their yard has a wetland that's the size of a cellphone, but most of the people who are gonna build in town, that any building project has to go to the Conservation Commission, and they look at these maps that we showed you, which have the wetlands mapped, already mapped. These wetlands are mapped in town. And if you have a mapped wetland, then you have a consultant, you would hire a consultant to go out, and the Conservation Commission would also go out and verify what the delineation of that wetland is. And hydric soils are very, there's a very specific characteristic of hydric soils. And the other aspect of it is, for those of you who are concerned with excess carbon dioxide in the air, and global warming, wetlands serve a really important role in sequestering carbon, in the roots of these hydric plants become part of the hydric soil.
Okay. Mr. Donahue.
Bob Donahue, Precinct Three. The lady who just spoke, could I ask you a couple of questions? Because I know absolutely nothing about wetlands.
You should have introduced myself, too. I'm Betsy Glidhfelder, I'm on the Conservation Commission.
We're talking about 10,000 square feet here. If we said 1,000 square feet, how does that, is that 1,000 square feet from the center of the water body that we find?
It isn't a water body. These are wetlands.
Well, the wetland, the wet ground that we find, I assume it's wet ground?
Yeah, well, some of them are oblong, and some of them are circular.
Okay, but I'm hung up on this 10,000 square feet. I don't know if anybody else is. What I'm saying is, if we reduced it to 5,000 feet...
I would not recommend you reduce it to 5,000 square feet. As Mr. Latimer pointed out, all of these wetlands are important.
What would the implication be to the town, to people? What are the benefits and what are the...
The benefits are, you're filtering the water, you're filtering nitrogen out of the water. This is, as Mr. Patterson pointed out, it's a sole source aquifer. Nitrogen and other pollutants that get into the groundwater, eventually, we have to pay to have it removed in our, those of us who have town water, our drinking water system. If you're pulling water out of the, if you have a well, you're polluting that groundwater system. So one of the aspects is, it filters out, it accesses the kidneys of the ecosystem.
But does this limit me from building, in other words, if I reduce it to 5,000, could I build closer to it? Is that what we're talking about?
No, 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 you wouldn't. Any size, any size wetland plays an important role, it's the function of the wetland.
But we're into...
So you have to have a 100-foot buffer, no matter what the square footage of this actual wetland is?
Correct.
The buffer is 100 feet from whatever you've defined.
I will also point out, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, but all of our resources have 100-foot buffers, but we call them, we call A and B buffer, and I believe for these wetlands, the 50 feet around the wetland is totally protected, we call it the no-touch zone. The next 50 feet, a homeowner can do things in it, but have to provide, if it's not, if the whole A buffer, the 100, if the 50 feet around the wetland is not vegetated, then if you're doing work, you have to complete the vegetation, or improve the environment in some other way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Segal.
Deborah Segal, Precinct Six. What Mr. Patterson said about being protected by the wetlands is a very important point. Another very important point is that wetlands are, is a very complex system and a very complex issue. And to try to tie the hands of the Conservation Commission by enacting something like this is a disservice to us, and it's a disservice to the wetlands, and it makes me very uncomfortable to see things tying their hands like this. So I urge you to vote this down.
Okay, Ms. Freytek. All set? Mr. Clark, Dr. Clark?
Move the previous question, close discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no.
The ayes have it by the two-thirds, and the question will come on the main motion, as printed. This is devoted to amend the wetlands regulation by adding this Section E. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The pen and chair, the noes have it, and the article doesn't pass, and we'll stand in a 15-minute recess. a 15-minute recess.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting, amid 200-year-old elm trees, and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool, and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape Cod Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for fctv.org are provided by Meganech Communications. Meganech offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running, and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganech.net.
The Quarterdeck Restaurant, located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, located in North Falmouth, just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarterdeck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Upper Cape Pet Sitting is your local private pet sitting company on the upper Cape. We specialize in caring for your pets in the comfort of your own home, allowing for consistency in care routine, dog walking, puppy and cat care, off-leash play, as well as transportation services. Upper Cape Pet Sitting, we treat your pets like our own.
Simply Hearing is an independent, locally-owned center for all your hearing needs. Simply Hearing is conveniently located in the center of Homeport Professional Offices. We offer all manufacturers, simple consultation, and years of service. Simply Hearing, 508-548-8123.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist, offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Dogs and Hogs, family-owned and operated for over five years. Our slow-smoked barbecue is available for dining, pickup, or catering, now featuring our homemade barbecue sauce. We also serve beer and wine, have gluten-free options, and lobster rolls.
The Attorneys at Oppenheimer-Nicherson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
We at Falmouth Fish believe there is nothing better than a fresh piece of fish, direct from the waters of Cape Cod in New England. Nothing beats waking up at 4:00 a.m. to search out the highest-quality seafood from the best fishermen in the world.
Seven Stars Academy, offering martial arts and Tai Chi. Training at Seven Stars Academy can transform your life. It's amazing to see the positive impact it has in our students. Classes for adults and children of all ages. Confidence, not conflict, at Seven Stars Academy of Martial Arts.
Hamilton Tree and Landscape has been proudly serving Falmouth and the upper Cape since 1978. Our newest location on Route 151 is now open for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
Thomas J. Bunker and Jeffrey E. Reither are BSS Design, providing land surveying and civil engineering in Falmouth since 1987. Licensed and fully insured, they're located on Catherine Lee Bates Road, and their phone number is 540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth.
Bayside Kitchen &amp; Bath, at 419 Palmer Avenue in Falmouth, where design and installation professionals work closely with homeowners, architects, and builders, offering a full range of cabinetry, countertops, and faucets. Bayside Kitchen &amp; Bath, returning you to beautiful spaces.
Waypoint Living Spaces, carrying a large variety of products to suit your needs in any living space of your house. Waypoint, available locally at Bayside Kitchen &amp; Bath, or online at waypointlivingspace.com.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. With a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessory and gourmet foods, our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
Cavosa Disposal is proud to provide trash removal, recycling, and composting to local businesses in Falmouth and surrounding communities. Cavosa Disposal would like to thank its customers in Falmouth. Cavosa Disposal, 508-563-5070. Family-owned since 1919. At Piraton Cape Cod, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Located on Main Street, Falmouth, and in Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis. Piraton Cape Cod, 199 Main Street, Falmouth, and online at piratoncapecod.com.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Dolpi Septic Plumbing, residential, commercial pumping and cleaning.
Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum. FriendsofNobbska.org.
The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org. 508-548-7440.
Partners Technology, voice and data solutions. 781-930-5000.
The Annie Hart Cool Team.
St. Elizabeth Seaton Church.
Soares Flower Garden Nursery.
M. Duffney Builders.
Neighborhood Falmouth.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop.
Danny's Barber Shop.
Carl F. Cavosa Excavating.
Paul's Precision Automotive Repair.
David Rogers Electric.
Murray and McDonald Insurance. 1-800-800-8990.
The Davy Tree Expert Company.
Andy's Barber Shop, in the Falmouth Plaza.
Chapman Colen-Gleason.
Hanush Jewelers, in downtown Falmouth.
Mahoney's Garden Center.
The Cape Cod Five.
Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank, in Falmouth and Woods Hole.
Falmouth Volunteers and Public Schools.
Vidal Metalwork.
And Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More.
Additional support provided by Roach Brothers Stop &amp; Shop, Walmart, and Windfall Market.
Okay, town meeting members present, please come forward for the reestablishment of the quorum. We're going to come back on Article 18. This is the stretch code article. Okay, all town meeting members present, please press 1A for the establishment of the quorum. Eighteen. Oh, excellent. That's good to know. You can't cheat and go out and?
Sit in the bathroom and vote.
No, uh? By a count of 193, we have a quorum, and I call the town meeting back into session. Also, would like to, would like to make an announcement, as we always do in the fall, that the Falmouth Service Center is having the drop-off for fresh turkeys on November 24th, between 12:00 and 4:00 o'clock. And during the break, one of our members actually received a text message from Brenda Swain. And so we want to thank Brenda. Our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family during this difficult time, but for all she's done for this community, all she's done for those in need. Thank you, Brenda. Article 18. Mr. Clark?
In light of the fact that this has been on our warrants in the past, may I, is it appropriate to ask for a vote to limit the time on this debate to perhaps 20 minutes?
You could put a rule, make a motion, but it's up to you.
I'm allowed to make a motion that we limit, try to limit debate to 20 minutes on this article?
Yeah, we just don't, we can't change the speaker limit.
I make such a motion.
Okay. 20-minute debate limit on this article is the rule that Dr. Clark is asking for. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. And the chairs at the ayes have it. And once we finish the presentation, we'll do a 20-minute limit. That's for the debate, right? Yeah, so we'll have the presentation, then with 20 minutes of debate. Okay. So the main motion, Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, we recommend Article 18 as printed.
As printed. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Moderator, I recommend, I move that the town meeting vote Article 18 as recommended.
Okay, we already have the motion in the Board of Selectmen.
Proceed.
Yep.
Last night, we talked about our beaches, some of our roads, our coastline. We talked about retreating. We talked about buying time. We talked about Mother Nature. Tonight, I found a positive note in our discussion of the wetlands. The wetlands are not simply defense, they are part of our offense, because they enable us to say, we are taking carbon dioxide out of the air. us to say, "We are taking carbon dioxide out of the air. We protect those wetlands, we are doing something about the climate." And that, I submit, is what we are doing with the step, the stretch code. It is part of our offense. We need defense, but we talked about a lot of things that are threatening us last night and tonight. We need offense. The stretch code is just one play in our playbook. It's one tiny little thing, it won't solve other problems. But we got some problems with climate disruption. We should take every step we can. That's why I urge you to vote in favor of our town adopting the stretch code. Now, I'm going to skip through a lot of my slides because we're going to have limited time tonight, but we know from the news that things are getting pretty bad. It's a question of our survival. Scientists all over the world have declared a climate emergency. We are facing changes. Most of us in this room are not going to live most of our lives in the midst of the worst of these changes, but the young people in our world are. And who are these people? These are the people that I hear so many of us saying, "We want to find a way to get them to want to stay here. We want them to come here. We want them to think of Falmouth as a good place to live." What are they looking for? What is important to them? Look at what they're doing. They are concerned about the climate. They are taking action, they are demanding action. What kind of a town do they want to live in? That's what we might ask ourselves. One more thing, the cost of our own living, right now, in the next couple of years, where are our electricity prices going? Our natural gas prices, our oil prices, our energy prices in general, do we think they're going to go down or that we need to take some positive offense action with them as well? That's what the stretch code is all about. If we adopt higher levels of energy efficiency as a mandate, yes, as a mandate, we will reduce our carbon footprint, we will reduce our emission of greenhouse gases, we will also save money in our homes. Here's another thing I've discovered about the stretch code now. It is not very different from the base code. As far as the requirements for lighting, nothing different in the stretch code. As far as sealing the building, nothing different in the stretch code. Same with insulation of the attic, the walls, the basement, nothing different in the stretch code. Same with the requirement of mechanical ventilation, nothing different. Same with the sealing of the ducts, nothing different. The same tests are required, blower door tests, whole house ventilation test, duck leakage test. So there are some serious questions that people are raising that we should take seriously and think about. What are some of those questions? Some have said to me, "Doesn't the base code already demand such a high level of energy efficiency that we are already reaching as high as we can go?" Maybe not. Maybe with some change in development, we can go higher. 276 cities and towns all across Massachusetts are already doing it. They are reaching higher. They have already adopted the stretch code. That includes 10 on Cape Cod, four on Martha's Vineyard, and the town of Nantucket. What are some of the differences between the base code and the stretch code? The stretch code is all about performance. The stretch code tests performance of the building to make sure it's doing the right job with energy efficiency. The idea is to guarantee good insulation. It's not enough just to say, "Okay, we got the insulation, the insulation in there, we sealed the building." The question is, is it working? Is it doing the job we want it to do? We want to assure the property owner that that house, that building will perform efficiently. So we're going to give the building a score, that's what the stretch code does, and it has to get a better score than the standard mandatory base code. In the stretch code world, the low score is the best score, just like in the game of golf. The low score means you're wasting less energy, you're using energy, wasting less. This puts a great deal of responsibility on the builder and a lot of opportunity, too. We need the builder. We have to rely on their judgment, their ability, their knowledge, their experience. They're the ones who know how to do this. They, most of them, are already doing this, and we need them to do this with a stretch code. For them, it is a matter of intelligent selection of the right club, as it were, in the game of golf, for the, a given shot. They could do this energy efficiency thing with more efficient windows, with a more efficient heating system, with a more efficient cooling system, a more efficient domestic hot water system, more effective sealing of all the ducts. Now, I'm going to skip through some things to get to one more thing. I had to do this. I know it's probably falling short, but I need a little humor here. One more thing. People want to know, people have asked me, "Well, what comes next? We adopt the stretch code, then what? How do we know where the stretch code is going?" We don't. I can't predict the future, but I think it's clear from what's happened in the last 10 years or so, especially here in Massachusetts, that Massachusetts is committed to raising the bar as far as energy efficiency goes. So, here's a question. The stretch code applies only to new construction, right? Yes, that's right. Additions, renovations, remodeling, they are exempt. The stretch code costs more than the base code, right? Yes, it does, but not much more. And here's an important question. What will this do to affordable housing? We want affordable housing if we want people to live here. Let's take a look at that. The Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources estimated for a three-bedroom, single-family detached house of, I can tell you, 2,550 feet. If you build left to the base code, same house right to the stretch code, on average, it's going to be almost $3,000 extra. But rebates are going to average almost $1,700. So that means after rebates, that one-time down payment is going to be about $130 extra. Those ongoing mortgage payments every month are going to be about $6 extra. Does that make the house affordable? You've got to answer that question. But they tell us that on average, with higher energy efficiency, that house will save an average of $44 a month. That makes it more affordable to live in once you own it. Will people buying the new houses have to pay more because of the stretch code? Yes, they will. Some people want to know, is that fair to make them pay more? Let's look at new construction. More greenhouse gases than buying an existing house. Why? Extraction of raw materials like aluminum, cutting of timber for lumber, milling the lumber, steel production, making the concrete, clearing the site where the house is going to be built, transporting and pouring the concrete, transporting those lumber products to the site, moving people, products, things, equipment, in and out of the construction site, and disposing of all the waste that that results in. All of those things generate a lot more greenhouse gases than does buying an existing house. You get a beautiful, brand-new house, you're going to pay a little bit more because of the stretch code. For some people here in Falmouth, that's going to be a second home. They'll pay a little bit more. We have to decide, is that fair to ask them to do that? What does Falmouth have to gain? Well, that's where we went all through the Green Community Grants. I can tell you a lot about that. I can tell you what given towns have been given in their grants.
Mr. Walker, we've got 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Do you need additional, request additional time?
I'd like one more minute.
One more minute? Is it two-thirds, all in favor, one more minute? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. There's a lot more, I'm going to skip right over. I want to get to the central question that seems to be the one that I come down to with the people that I talk to. Getting close to it. Oops, went right by it, sorry. Hey. Will the stretch code be a mandate? Some are concerned about, okay, this is great, I just don't want a mandate. Well, yes, it's going to be a mandate. This is what building codes are all about, rules and regulations. You have to comply with them. Massachusetts has a statewide building code, and so the stretch code is going to be a part of that. So that gives some people serious chest pains. And they say mandates, mandates, enough is enough, but the base code, the base energy code is already a mandate we have to comply with. And some mandates can be beneficial. I'm glad we have a mandate to be checked out before we get on airplanes. I'm glad there's a bylaw mandate, this is, "My neighbor cannot make his yard a dump site." I'm glad there's a mandate telling us to stop our pedestrians in the crosswalk. A mandate for higher energy efficiency can protect all of us from some of the threats we have to deal with, but I know it's just one tiny little thing, one play in our playbook. We need offense, and we need the help of those people who are going to be uncomfortable with us, with this. It's not going to be easy. It's not going to be comfortable for us to adopt, adapt, I'm sorry, to what we have to adapt to in the world of climate disruption. We better get used to it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Walker, I hear you're on a journey tomorrow, and this will be your last town meeting, so excellent, excellent parting presentation. Discussion on Article 18. Ms. Putnam. Nope, well, Energy Committee, let's do Energy Committee first. Sorry, I did tell them that we'd recognize them first.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Carey, Precinct 5, and the Energy Committee wholeheartedly supports this, as we discussed last night, for the reasons, all of the reasons that Grant mentioned tonight. We work closely with him on this petition and did lots of homework, talking to neighbors and stakeholders, and just to make sure that we understood the objections and, and the, all the benefits completely. So we are all for it, and thank you, Grant, for bringing this petition. I urge fellow town meeting members to vote yes on Article 18. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. From my perspective, the most practical reason to support this article is that we will not qualify for funding from the Green Communities Act until we do so. We are now paying into the fund and have been doing so since its inception. Because of this rule, Falmouth is missing out on about $200,000 a year that can go to making the town more energy efficient and which stretches our budget. Another practical reason to consider supporting this article is that the number of new housing units the stretch code will affect is less than 1% of our housing stock. It will not impact additions. Is it doable? Absolutely. In 276 communities in the Commonwealth, towns are doing it, builders are doing it already. Will these homes have four feet of insulation in the attic and bad air? The answer is an unequivocal no. The stretch code will inconvenience builders, yet they can take pride in knowing that the homes they build under the stretch code will be models of energy efficiency. Our builders are on the forefront of fighting global warming, and they hold the key to a more energy-efficient town. The most important reason we should vote for this article is global warming and sea level rise. And I'd like to cede some of my time to Philip Gessen, who is one of the students here from Falmouth High School, who I asked to come and speak, and he, I'm glad he did. Come on in.
He's not only the microphone carrier, but he's also a client.
Hi, my name's Philip Gessen. I'm from Falmouth High School, and I'm here to provide a student's perspective on the issue. So I grew up hearing about climate change and global warming. We would have scientists come into our elementary school classes and tell us about the problem, rising temperatures, rising sea levels. I didn't immediately grasp the impact of the issue. I remember thinking, "If Falmouth looked like the Caribbean all year long, would it really be that bad?" I know better now. Falmouth would probably look more like New Orleans after Hurricane Katrina than the Caribbean. But eight years later, I'm in high school, and the issue we were told about in elementary school hasn't been curbed. It hasn't been solved, it's only getting worse. The melting of the ice caps has tripled in the last 25 years, yet our CO2 emissions that are raising the temperatures and sea levels are nowhere near where they need to be to fight this issue. Instead of decreasing our fossil fuel consumption, which would decrease our emissions, the U.S. has been increasing its yearly emissions. In 2018, we increased them by 3.1% compared to previous years. If we follow this trend, changes will be irreversible. Estimates say we have until 2030 to curb climate change, or the consequences will be globally catastrophic. We need to do something. The stretch code is part of that something. It's a flexible regulation on buildings that will be built in the future in Falmouth. It evaluates the holistic energy efficiency of a building rather than defining specific installations that it must have. The code is devised by the state, which is ready to provide a substantial amount of money for towns who follow it. Our regulations as of now are close to the stretch code, yet are not enough to reap its financial benefits. So it's practical, it reduces emissions, and it finances future environmental expenditures. So, in a world that has little time to save itself, the stretch code is one step closer to a survivable future. Although Falmouth is one small town in the grand scheme of the globe, we need to stand together with other towns who have passed the stretch code and set the example for others to follow. It is through changes like these that snowball into state, national, and global environmental action that we can truly make a difference. So I ask you now, for your friends, for your family, for your community, and your future, vote yes on Article 18.
If you could just deliver that microphone up to Ms. Putnam, and we'll... Good job.
Rebecca Putnam, Precinct 9. That was a very nice presentation, so here comes reality. My father and I do construction. I am on a construction site every day. We just currently, last week, had a conversation with the Hurst Raiders tester on one of the houses we're getting ready to close on. We asked him about the stretch code. Do I know what he said about the stretch code? It's actually, underperforms below what the current building code is. So right now, houses are having to meet 94% energy efficiency under the current code. That's what we have to meet. And in order to meet that, I'm going to once again explain. Right now, when you build a house, we put the insulation in the wall, in the framing. Do you know what goes over that? A vapor barrier that has to be fully sealed and stapled. So think about it, we live on Cape Cod, think about how much humidity we just had this year. Think about what the moisture is in between the four inches, or six inches, because we have to meet two-by-six construction now, of wall. And how long does it take to become mold? How long does it take to penetrate the house eventually? How long does it take to affect somebody's insurance or health? The problem is, is that when we do meet this particular building code currently, we now have to put air handling transfer systems in. So you're now sucking air out, sucking air back in, 24/7, they cannot be shut off. So now you're using more electricity, just in FYI, in the house. So now you're using more electricity, just in FYI, in the house that we're trying to like, stop using so much more electricity because it's mandated. We have to actually run two fans, a regular house fan, from your bathroom on a timer for 12 hours a day in order to bring in enough clean, good air so that you don't get sick in your new house. And by the way, the sales pitch that if you're doing a renovation, you don't have to meet it. Any addition onto a new house has to meet the current energy efficient standards. It has to be two-by-six construction. You have to go through all of the testing with presenting plans and having your energy efficiency rated. The Hurst Raiders do a really good job. And I'm going to trust an expert who actually is promoting energy efficiency over folks that say, let's do a stretch code because it sounds good and because we're going to get $200,000 maybe a year out of it, maybe. So I would ask that you vote this down based on the fact that we're already doing a really good job as builders and we don't want people's health at stake. Thank you.
Yeah, in the back again?
I'm Charles Rader from Precinct 2. As we know, this was brought up to the town in 2011 and again in 2018 and voted down. And I've watched the video of the 2018 town, Spring Town Meeting to try to understand the reasons behind those who voted in opposition. And their reasons are well motivated, but nevertheless, I'm going to criticize them. One common theme of the opponents in 2018 was that Commonwealth was going too far and that Falmouth, both government and citizens, should be in control. Reasonable motive. But rejecting the stretch code won't really keep local control. We'll just delay the inevitable. Our present building code incorporates the state's standard building code. The state revises both the standard code and the stretch code every three years and the typical pattern has been to move some features of the stretch code... Typical pattern has been to move some features of the stretch code into the standard code and hence into our code and to add a few new features to the stretch code. The last time this was done, the stretch code changed by just a little and the standard code changed by a lot. All indications are that this will be the future pattern. Our building code today has many of the stretch code features that we voted down in 2011. What would bring us more, more local control? I wish I knew. Sadly though, rejecting the stretch code won't do it. Another common theme of opponents in 2018 was that it's just morally wrong to impose a regulatory burden on some other person. That's also a worthy motive. But opposition to the stretch code doesn't accomplish that very well. Almost nobody gets protected. 99% of us aren't about to build a new home. Many of the remaining 1% already opt to adopt, to follow the stricter code anyway. And so they do it to save their energy costs. We might feel virtuous standing up for principle, but the effect is so diluted that it's hard to see, that it can outweigh the economic advantage of us getting those grants.
Okay, Mr. Dufany. Mr. Patrick, I got you back on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Dufany, Precinct 6. It seems that the time has come that the stretch code is going to be adopted here in Falmouth. But I've got to say, I need to straighten out a few things that have been said here this evening that I don't believe are 100% correct so that I can have a clear conscience myself when the dust settles on all of this. And Rebecca was correct in most of everything that she said about what we're faced with now as builders. The stretch code hasn't been stretched. The last time I spoke about this, that was my fear, it hadn't been stretched and it still hasn't been stretched again today. And so, that said, we are working under the International Energy Council Code of 2015 and the stretch code is basically following, ensued if you will, behind that. There really are very insignificant differences at the moment. And again, I don't want to speak against this, but you just need to understand that when they stretch this, we're probably talking about triple paying windows, that's one of the things that's on the table, orientational homes for PV, and a number of other things that are actually going to be going through the proper protocol that the stretch did not, which is the biggest issue that the home builders across the state have had, is that Deval Patrick put this in as his own initiative and it's the only one that's been allowed, every other one's been defeated since then. So, but I just want people to understand that this is not going to make Falmouth a more energy-efficient town. We're going to feel a lot better because we're going to be a stressed community and we're going to be joining the other 275 or seven communities that are stressed communities and hopefully getting some of the money that you're paying every month in your electric bills as a, which is, to me, is, you know, is another issue in itself that you're paying for this here because the utility companies don't want to do what we're doing. They don't want to put up turbines. They don't want to do the things that are going to make them more efficient. They're being forced to do it and what they're not doing is being, is being subjugated by you and your electric bills, okay? It's anywhere from $2 to $5 a month. So I just want to put these facts out there so that people understand when you do vote this, that it's really about the money. At the end of the day, it's about the town getting the money that you're all paying in. It's not because, in my opinion, that this is better, because it's not. And I hope that the Energy Committee will take some of the suggestions that I've tried to offer to them, to find another criteria to add to the five criteria that we have now, make a sixth criteria that might be, as Charlie Baker wanted last year, to make your house rated so that before you sold your house, the people that buy it know what they're buying, okay? And that also could help you if you were at 80% of the median income, you could get better insulation, which, right now, there are great programs out there that are being subsidized us, but if you meet a certain criteria, maybe you wouldn't have to pay anything rather than the towns getting the money. And I have a, I have major hot burn with the towns getting this money as opposed to individuals. So that's, I just want to put those things out there. I think that the stretch, one of the things the stretch did was it kicked the BBRS in the butt to get, to get onboard with much more energy efficiency in the state of Massachusetts. And they have done so to the point where they've actually taken the lead and we are, as you all know, or hopefully know, that we are one of the, one of the most energy-efficient states in the nation, okay? And so that, right now, because we adopted the IECC, you know, that's the highest you can go at the moment. And I believe we're going to continue to adopt that, well, it's mandated, so we're going to continue to adopt that as part of our base code. And to what Rebecca said, and I'll just finish with this here, is that you do have to put makeup air units in houses, air exchanges in the houses, not just putting a bathroom fan in backwards. You need to be able to have your house climatized or else you're going to have, have issues. I know, I do it for a living, we do it in every house that we do, I do it in my own home. These are just the reality, okay? And so, I'm just going to end with that. I think we're going to adopt this here, but to understand that this does not put us up here where we want to be, okay? Because the, right now, our code is higher, our base code is higher than the stretch. Thank you.
Mr. Lemay.
My people here want to know what the survey says. Joel Lemay, Precinct 9. My survey says 60% in favor of the stretch code. I'm not on the Affordable Housing Committee, but I go to all their meetings and they deliberated on the stretch code and asked me to, as a town meeting member, to deliver the Affordable Housing Committee report. The Affordable Housing Committee deliberated on the effect that the stretch code might have on the ability to reduce affordable housing. Building costs of affordable units will go up, but the committee does not believe the increase will deter developers from building affordable units that meet the stretch code. Now, so you've got to understand how affordable housing works. The government defines guidelines that puts a limit on how much you can earn to qualify for an affordable unit. That earnings is used by the bank to determine your mortgage ability. So hypothetically, let's just say it's $220,000. The person can borrow $220,000 and give it to the builder. In Falmouth, $220,000 will get you a buildable lot and maybe a foundation. That's about it. Now, you've got to put a house on top of that foundation, so the developer has to go out and get public grants and public money and private donations to finish off the house. So let's say the house costs $350,000. They're out there getting $130,000 of money to finish the house. When the house is done, the qualified buyer gets the mortgage and gives that mortgage to the developer. So if the developer has built to the stretch code, they're not getting more than that $220,000 from the new owner. They're going to have to get larger grants or larger donations so that that extra money will be paid for by the, you know, going out and getting more money from the subsidies. Laptop's going. So the developer will probably also get the rebates. So when Grant did those things, it says developer paid for the fancy heating system. The fancy heating system has a rebate, developer gets the money, doesn't go to the new owner. But now the owner is in the house, they're making their mortgage payment, and they're living in a house that now has lower monthly energy costs. So now it's even more affordable than it would have been before for the owner. So that's how it's going to work. So at the last meeting, the Affordable Housing Committee voted unanimously to support Article 18.
Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
We're at 20. Sorry, we're at the 20 minutes. So the question that will come on the main motion as printed for adoption of the stretch energy code. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It's been in the chairs that the ayes have it by a majority. Safe trip to Colorado. Article 19. Madam Chair, for the main motion.
Recommend the article as printed.
Okay, this is to authorize a board of selectmen to sell or convey a portion of town land at 50 Twin Oaks Road with a structure thereon for use of a single unit of affordable housing in perpetuity. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Dufry.
Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members. Adrian Refrain, Precinct 2. I'd like to read one little, couple little sentences in the explanation. We're told the house hasn't been occupied in 50 years. And though it may be structurally sound, the interior is gutted, requires complete rehabilitation. The property does not have electric service, water, or septic system. It is anticipated that a developer will require a maximum per unit subsidy from the town of $65,000. When this purchase first came up some 25 years ago, I can't remember what committee I was on, I was either on the finance committee or whatever. A proposal to separate this building was put forth to pay for, quote, "the cost of the building." Proposal, an article was presented for $30,000 to tear the house down. Town meeting at that time voted no. So $30,000 was appropriated some 25 years ago to tear this building down. This building does not meet any of the standards, quote, "of either habitation or public safety." When I visited the house, and again, I'm going to, I can't recollect what my purpose was, I think I was either on the finance committee or, or something, I said, Jesus Christ, what a piece of junk. But anyway, that was me 25 years ago. I don't think anything has changed. We acquired this property for future well site. To take, to say we're going to take this parcel, which is, I think, two acres zoning, and we're going to put a Habitat for Humanity house, affordable housing, you know, we've got affordable housing all over town. Why would we want to put this derelict, conditioned house up for remodel of, the estimate is some $150,000, $250,000? Is that going to, is that going to be an affordable house? I don't think so. I am adamant that we should not touch this piece of open space, I'll use that for my personal thinking, in order to put, quote, "a single house." And it's not, and that house won't be affordable, I can tell you right now. I banged a few nails in my lifetime and I can tell you right now, they cannot build that house. First of all, I think they're going to take down the original, or spend the original $30,000 to demolish it and start over. I just had a hard time that this was approved by the Board of Selectmen. We here in town meeting have a lot of things that we have to think about in the next few years. Affordable, I do this on town meeting floor and I don't want to take up any more of your time. Whatever your vote is going to be, mine is going to be no. And I could care less who thinks it should be something else. Thank you very much for listening.
How does he really feel? Ms. Bissonette. Ms. Harris, you're on the list.
On that note, Mr. Moderator, could I have six minutes instead of four, please? Because I have a PowerPoint with this. I have 10? I have 10?
Well, if you're...
Do I have 10?
That's the main presentation.
I'm the presenter. Okay. I don't think I'm going to need 10, but... Hi, I'm Karen Bissonette. I am the Executive Director of Falmouth Housing Trust. I'm also a town meeting member with Precinct 2. And I have Joanne O'Sullivan, who's the President of our board, here with me tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you to discuss the renovation of the Williams Hollow Road House. Falmouth Housing Trust comes to you tonight to help us create more affordable housing by saving this property. To do this, we will need the town to give us this house and the land it sits on, which falls under the selectman's purview, being on property that is municipal and/or water resource. You may remember that Falmouth Housing Trust answered the call to the town to have someone save Oddfellow's Hall because it was an eyesore and falling down. This once blighted property is now a gorgeous building, which is the centerpiece of Town Hall Square and has four affordable apartments. Falmouth Housing Trust is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) whose mission is to create affordable workforce housing for a demographic in our community who adds value because they work in jobs that are critical to our local economy and our way of life. Falmouth's lack of affordable housing is an obstacle to attracting and retaining a talented workforce. To retain this population, we need someplace for them to live, and only with creative and out-of-the-box ideas is this going to happen. We need this demographic to supply the services that so many of us depend upon for our quality of life. There is no doubt that Falmouth has an affordable housing crisis. The Cape lost 3,000 year-round units between 2010 and 2015 and 5,000 seasonal units were gained. The median cost of a house in Falmouth is approximately $425,000 and it has increased an astounding $100,000 in the last eight years. You would need to earn about $113,000 to purchase this home and renters are paying so much that they can't save for a down payment. Many of you in this room purchased your homes years ago when the cost of housing was reasonable. Well, it is not anymore and we all should be concerned about this and doing something about it. We are driving our young people away by not having houses, housing opportunities for them. And I have heard all the arguments as to why this may not be a suitable place for an affordable home. And yes, it is not perfect, but it is an opportunity to provide a home for a member of our community who wants to make Falmouth their permanent home. Mike Dufany will tell you in his own words that this house has good bones and is worth saving. Architect Chris Warner visited the property and finds the project exciting and worthy. In a September 10th editorial in the Cape Cod Times about this property, it states, quote, "There is a degree of complexity here balancing the ability of one family to live in a town versus future viability of the town's water supply. And after all, there is little to suggest..." And after all, there is little to suggest that the addition of this one home will upset the overall environmental balance or somehow render the remaining 86 acres less worthwhile when it comes to a possible future well." And it goes on to say, quote, "That although one home likely will not make a difference in terms of overall water quality, it could be significant difference in the overall quality of at least one family's life, which is why Town Meeting voters should support this effort when it gets, when they get the chance." We will not get out of this housing crisis by doing the same old things. We must be creative, flexible, and bold. Otherwise, we will fail. I think we all want Falmouth to be a vital and economically strong community. This housing crisis threatens the way of life as we have known it in Falmouth, and I implore you to vote yes on this article. And I think I do have a PowerPoint. This is the home. As you can see, the stonework is absolutely incredible, and I know that Mike's going to talk about the structure itself. In the article, it talks about this being in a remote area, but it is .15 miles off of Sam Turner. So those of you who live in Hatchville, I think all of you live in a remote area according to that. So that is the road. That's Williams Hollow. It is a dirt road, but it's a nice dirt road. So area median income. So an affordable home is sold to someone who makes 80% of area median income, which is given to us by the federal government. So we're talking about someone, if it were one person, that makes $51,250 or less. So we're talking about people that have professions. These are Barnstable County numbers as far as what people make and some of the professions that we're talking about that maybe would want to live in this house. And I think if you look there, can you imagine not having all of those occupations within our community? I think we'd be in tough shape. So just to give you a little idea, the plan is to sell this house for $170,000. And you can just see, there was a handout that I gave that you all should have seen yesterday. So that would be the mortgage numbers. And here are housing expenses. So in there, as you notice, I have put homeowner's association fees of $120,000. It is a private road, and the other seven occupants of that road contribute approximately $857 a year according to their numbers. And so I put that number in there just to show you that someone who does make that amount of money could afford to live in that home. These are the numbers that Mr. Duffany provided me, the construction numbers. The soft costs include engineering, legal fees, housing lottery, things like that. And as far as the revenue goes, as you see, there'll be a sale of the house. We will approach the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, which is community preservation money, and then I will raise the rest of it. So that's where we get the rest of that. And that is it. So if you have any questions, I would welcome them.
Okay. Ms. Listonstein?
There is no question that we need more affordable housing in Falmouth. What bothers me about this article is process. We were told when we bought it at Town Meeting that it was for a potential well field. It was for water protection. Now, boilerplate always has to say municipal use or whatever we want it for. However, while I've been a Town Meeting member, for some reason, very often, it doesn't become what it is we voted for. Somebody has decided, "Well, it's better to do this." This bothers me. And I've had other Town Meeting members say maybe they just don't want to be a Town Meeting member anymore because it doesn't matter what you vote, they're going to do what they want to do anyway. I think this is a very slippery slope. We bought it for watershed protection. We want affordable housing. We should get land for affordable housing. We should not take a piece that we said was going to be watershed protection and do this. I mean, next year, we could take another two acres off of another well shed protection. I, I think it's time that we hold the town administration to the fire. If they say, "We're going to do this," we expect them to do it. If they say, "We're not going to do this," we expect them not to do it. So I'm not going to vote for this article, not because I'm against affordable housing, but because it is against what we were told when we voted for it. Thank you.
Mr. Rafferty. Mr. Haylen, you're on the list.
Stephen Rafferty, the Water Superintendent in the town of Falmouth. I've worked with the affordable housing folks, helped them to get projects developed. This is a project that should not go forward. It's very, very difficult through the state permitting process under the Water Management Act. I'm sorry, it's very, very difficult through the Water Management Act to permit a new well. We've already begun the process when we acquired this land to permit upwards of four wells based upon a study done 20 years ago for water from that area. We built a treatment plant a number of years back called the Crooked Pond Water Treatment Plant in that area. The state takes a very dim view when people start to encroach on lands set aside for water treatment and/or water resources. If we're going to grow this community, we need additional sources of water. Road Race Weekend, July 4th Weekend, and just about every weekend in the summer, we are right on the cusp of using all of our water resources. We are going to embark on a process going forward to develop the next well and/or wells. And this location is a prime location. The town owns the land. It's been designated for water. I think if we look long and hard, maybe even not so long or hard, there are other locations in town where we can use this money for affordable housing. But there are a few other locations in town where we can use this money for another source of water. I ask you to vote against this article.
Okay, Mr. Duffany.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Duffany, Precinct 6. So where did this come from? About a year ago, we voted for, we voted some money to knock down a house, and I honestly thought that we were finishing off the house and walk white at the time with that money was going to. But instead, that money went to tear down the home at Peterson Farm. And that was a house that I had on my radar screen as another house that was well worthy of being able to be put into the housing inventory in the, you know, for the affordable or workforce housing in Falmouth. So I pull up to the site, and they had just finished the day before, and it was all raked out and cleaned, and the Peterson Farm house was gone. And that was a house that, we went to school with a girl that lived there. The house was, was very active for a number of years. So I said, "So where did this money, where does this money go to?" And I called Susan Smith of the Finance Committee. And sorry, Sue, I'm going to not pick on you, but I called Sue because I knew that I could get a straight answer from her. Where did we just vote this $30,000 for? I believe that was the number. She said, "It's a, it's a tear down a house out, out off of Sam Turner Road." So I said, "Well, I'm going to go take a look at that house before they go tear that one down as well." Because again, we have a need. And so I go out and I look at it, and if you could put the slide back up that shows this house. It's on the fringe of the property for starters. It couldn't get any further away from a potential well site than it is. It was an existing home. It has a telephone pole on the property, so it has an aerial easement. It also has town water in the, on the road because we brought the town water there. So it has water to it. And it needs a new septic system regardless of whether it was built 20 years ago or 50 years ago. It would need a new Title V anyways. So it will have, it will certainly have all of those utilities. But you look at this, you can't see from here, but on the right-hand side, there's actually a garage under. So that stone goes down another eight feet on the far side. It's in impeccable condition. It has three sets of stairs that you can see are overgrown. It has two chimneys in it, all made of stone. They were all built by hand, all little one-man stone, that somebody years ago, and I don't know when the house was built, if it was built in the '30s or in the '60s or whatever, did an incredible job. Actually, probably in the '40s because I look at the framing in this house, it looks like it's construction fur that we used a lot of in the, in the mid-'40s to the mid-'50s. So you, you look at that and you go, "So it's been sitting since, what, 1980-something without any maintenance whatsoever to it?" Hopefully, I won't get arrested for this, but I went in this house on Friday. I took a piece of plywood off, I took a piece of plywood off the garage under, and I went inside to see what condition it's in since it was boarded up six months or so ago by the town because of the vandalism that was taking place, and it was kind of a, an attractive nuisance. And I got to tell you, it rained, I think, on Wednesday or Thursday, and I was in there Friday morning about 7:00. It was bone dry. I haven't seen a drop of water in the house in the six times that I've been in the house. It has floors that are flat. It's been pretty much gutted by kids or whoever that was in there, so there's not a lot of demolition. It's only a two-bedroom house. It's not a big house. But anybody that's looked at it would have, I think, would share the same sentiment that I have, is that any house that has survived the last 35 or 40 years of complete and total utter neglect that's in the condition that this house is in, and this picture doesn't do it justice. If you go out there, you'll say the same thing to yourself. You go like, "What is, what am I missing?" You know, it needs a lot of work. It needs, needs windows, needs siding, needs roof, but it doesn't need to be torn down. I wouldn't tear this house down if it was mine. It'd need to cut back about six inches on the overhang. You can see that the, that the eaves are, you know, it not only has fly rafters, but on the front, it has a fairly significant overhang. We could cut four inches back and there'd be no rot, and we could just keep right on going. This, this house is extremely salvageable. And I'm, I'm sorry that, that not everyone has gone out to look at this and has, you know, and has formed an opinion that it needs to come down. It, it doesn't need to come down. And I think that if you've looked at it, you'd say the same thing. This is an opportunity.
Okay, Mr. Duffany, we're at four minutes.
And thank you. I just wish you would consider this. I think this should take a positive motion. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charlotte Harris, Precinct 5. And I'm a member of the Planning Board, but I don't speak as a member of the Planning Board because the Planning Board hasn't discussed this at all. So as, coming from Precinct 5, I'd like to speak against this project. I'm very much in favor of affordable housing. Karen's statistics are fine. It's true that we need it. I don't think that this is the project that we need. This land was supposed to be for water quality. I'm glad that Steve spoke up for that. You've already heard that part. We're being told that this is going to be affordable housing. I don't believe it. When Mary and I went to find this house, it's a trick to find it. I don't know how many of you have been to Williams Hollow Road. That's the road sign on the little dirt road off Sam Turner. On your GPS map, it looks like Crooked Pond Road. It's a winding dirt road that goes in and around the top of Crooked Pond, and it's actually inside of the pond. The thing that's going to, no matter what it costs to redo the house, no matter how much the builder really sacrifices to make it affordable, the person who's going to live in this is going to have to pay for the upkeep on the house. It happened when we went to go take a look at the house. It's a single-track road. We had to back up because another car was coming in, and it was Mr. Buchanan, who lives at the end of the road. His grandfather built that. He tried to buy it from the town because he loved his grandfather and he likes the stonework. He wasn't allowed to buy it because the water quality issue was so paramount at that time. So he was refused. But what he did say is that there are seven houses on the road. Only three of them are people who live there full-time. The rest are just summer people because it's an impassable road in the winter. And he said that. He also said for each of the homeowners has to pay about $400 a month in carrying costs. That telephone pole was put up privately, the one that's in front of the house. The others were also put up privately. They have to maintain them. They tried to get every source to take responsibility for them. Every source won't do it because they're over 10 years old, and every source won't do that. Everything that comes in has to be paid for by these seven houses, and that's about $5,000 a year on top of whatever the mortgage might be. Excuse me, it's not going to be an affordable property. Other things, two more points. This is going to put the Planning Board, should it come to them, and the article you'll see says that it's going to, in a really difficult position because it will invite us to violate our own rules. This house is in two-acre zoning. Karen had said at one of the precinct meetings, "Well, you can carve out a little piece." You know, the Planning Board doesn't carve out little pieces when the zoning says two acres. Sorry. That's about the zoning. It's in two-acre zoning. The Planning Board doesn't carve out little pieces in two-acre zoning to make it possible to make it appear to be a more affordable lot. The most serious thing wrong with this house is the road. The road is only 12, only 12 feet wide at its very, very widest. It's impossible for two cars to pass one another on this road. One or the other has to give way and find a place to back up to. If you were 1.5, how far down? It seemed very far down, didn't it? You can't see it from Sam Turner Road. In fact, you can't see it when you drive by it. It's covered up by trees, even though it's close to the road. But it's a long ways in on the road. The road is curvy. The road is hilly. It would only take one tree falling across it, and it would be impassable. It would be impossible for a fire truck to get down that road. The zoning would say that you're, or the, the letter of determination that need to say that they have adequate access says that they would need 18 feet wide roadway, and they don't have it there. The final thing I want to say is I really think it's an inappropriate use of public money for affordable housing. The $65,000, after all, is public money, and the need for the town is rental housing. It's not single-family housing. If the public money, rather than being handed out 65 grand apiece, were saved up so that we had incentive money to build rental housing and get in friendly 40Bs, then we'd really be making a dent in getting closer to have the 578 units we need. We're not going to get there one at a time.
Okay, Ms. Harris, we're at four minutes. Dr. Schneider? I can put you back on the list as well.
Barbara Schneider, Precinct 4. My husband and I went to the house this morning. It is not that hard to find. And it is the second house down the road off of Sam Turner. My husband and I have gutted a 1926 English Tudor. We have completely redone an 1800's farmhouse in Ohio. We have experience with these houses as well as building new. And I will tell you that this house is wonderful as far as design, structure, and potential. It had icicles hanging down from it this morning. But the stonework, the steps, the shape of it, everything about it says it should be spared. And we need to think of being a little bit out of the box as we go forward. We just, my husband and I went to look at some new condominiums in North Falmouth, two of which are affordable, six of which are not for ourselves. The two affordable units, which you probably read about in the paper, ended up getting 21 applications for purchase, 17 of which were qualified buyers. When we talk about needing rental housing, you are absolutely right, but you also need this type of ownership housing. This house would make a wonderful house for a lot of people who want to live here and work here, and I really hope you will consider this. There are other houses on that road that have been there. They haven't had an issue about a fire truck. They have managed, and I do think with Mike Duffany's telling us that it can be done in an affordable way, we should believe him.
Mr. Haylen? Ms. Neto, you're on the list.
Michael Haylen, Precinct 5. First of all, I should have raised my hand earlier. You all stole most of my thunder. But I agree with Mr. Rafferty about the water issue. We need this water for future wells. Drinking water is very important. I also want to mirror what Ms. Harris said about the, the road. I drove down there the other day. It's a very narrow road. The road is not paved. The road is privately owned, I believe, and it is not the best place for affordable housing. I'm all for affordable housing, but I know that the Planning Board and the town has discussed putting affordable housing in places where people can get to. This home is not near any public transportation. It is not near shopping. It is not near any of these things. And one more thing, if we could put up the, the numbers of what it would cost on that slide here. Keep on going. here, keep on going if you could, and right here. No, I'm sorry, one more. Where this money is coming from, the money that you're asking the town to get the money, I sent an email, and I apologize, everyone here, reply all to the email. So if you got my email a couple weeks ago, that's why. But a lot of the money that is asking, is being asked to save this home, is from CPC money, which is not money in hand yet. So my issue is that if this does go through and those CPC monies are used for other purposes around town, then what happens to this house? Are we back here next year asking for it to be demolished like we voted last year for it to be demolished? I urge everyone to vote no on this article. Thank you.
Ms. Zuplat?
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Peggy Zuplat, Precinct 7. My husband and I did go out and look at that house, and I have to commend the photographer that took the picture because that is the best angle of that house. It shows the lovely stonework. There is another fireplace pit that is beautifully built. But if you walk around that house, the other side has a gaping hole up in the roof at the top of the side that if it hasn't been boarded up until recently, it has been having all sorts of animals and everything else living in there for quite a while. It's, I understand about the affordable housing. It is a beautiful spot for the woods, if you like that kind of place, but that is not the house we need to buy and refurbish or give to you to refurbish for affordable housing in this town. I'm sorry, I can't approve this.
Okay. Down in the front here, I saw her hand. Yep.
Joanna Bennett, Precinct 8. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that the people who have spoken have not been looking for affordable housing on an entry-level salary in the past 10 years. My husband and I have been, and all of our contemporaries have been. I was born and raised in this town. I work for the Falmouth Road Race. My husband works for MBL. A lot of our friends work in the community. We love this community, and we want to live here, but it is really close to impossible. I cannot tell you how many times we have seen friends leave the town when they don't want to, leave their jobs, because they cannot find anywhere to live. And I'm hearing a lot of people saying this, "I'm all for affordable housing, but..." And I understand that this is a little out of the box, but the reality is that that is where we are at. We are not going to get this silver bullet that's going to give us all 400-plus units that we need. What we are going to do is do it one at a time like this, or two at a time, like the units in North Falmouth. This is how it happens. And this unit may not seem like a big deal to anyone, but for me, having looked for housing for 10 years, I am not kidding when I say a decade spent looking at real estate listings twice a day, trying to find somewhere for my husband and myself and our three-year-old son to live, that house would have saved our lives. That house would have been a godsend. And I can tell you that it would be just that for so many of my friends that I know of that are looking for somewhere to live with their family, where they just want to be able to live in this town that they love and that they work in. I would urge you to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Swain? Mr. Swain? Right, with microphone, please. With the microphone, please.
Thank you. Charlie Swain from Precinct 1. Sorry, I'm a little confused in this article. We've been pushing affordable housing, which the town definitely needs, and Mr. Rafferty said we need this piece of land for water for the town. Now, in my opinion, water is more important than housing at this point, so which way are we headed here? Is someone able to explain? Should this be definitely saved for water, or should we reserve for affordable housing? Is there somebody that can answer that question?
I think that's a, I think that's why we're here. We're going to make that decision with this vote. That's a value question, and so you're all going to have to decide that when you take this vote in a few minutes. Ms. Neto?
So my understanding, it's been quite an education, is that when you cite a well, Mr. Rafferty, that you need a 400-foot circumference around that spot. Is that correct? Great. You know, like it has to be a radius. Is that correct? Is there, Peter, is there a picture of that?
Could you queue up the Fox 8 slide with the red circle showing the location of the house, please?
Because this, where this is located, there wouldn't be 400. My understanding is this wouldn't be an appropriate place, or the 400 feet that need to be around that wouldn't be an appropriate place.
To do my best not to get argumentative about this, there are a series of state regulations through the DEP referring to Zone 1, Zone 2, and Zone 3 around any well that gets put in. There is a Zone 1, and off the top of my head, I don't have it memorized for what a Zone 1 is. It might be the 400-foot radius you're referring to. And then Zone 2 is determined through a hydrological evaluation of the soils and everything to determine the zone of contribution to the well, and other restrictions apply. The issue is more, from my perspective, that there's a thing called the Water Resource Management Act that looks at how communities manage their water resources and take care of their water resources over time, and whether they value them and protect them and are wasting water or not wasting water in their community. The study that I referred to looked at locations like Beebe Woods, this parcel, and portions of Ballymead. Well, Ballymead's no longer available. Beebe Woods is no longer available because of the determination that there's saltwater intrusion in that area. This area sits at the top, more towards the top of the aquifer, the Sagamore lens, than anybody, anyplace else if the town currently has options or opportunity to. So to the extent that the state looks at the fact that the town of Falmouth wants to start carving little pieces of this land off and giving it away for other purposes, the state will look poorly at our request for more water when we need it, and will say, "You need to restrict your growth or change the way you use water," or whatever else. We haven't tried to site another well up there yet, so I don't have a location for it. I can't argue to the specifics, one foot left or right of where you want to do this exchange of property. It's a parcel originally acquired for water resources. Like I say, we've built a treatment plant up in North Falmouth there, the Crooked Pond Treatment Plant. There's two wells, one in Coonamessit, one near Crooked Pond that go to it. It was built so it could take water from four wells over time and size out accordingly. I'm in favor of affordable housing. I'd work with you to find other locations.
So I'm just going to answer some of the concerns that people had. As far as the carrying costs, the numbers that I got from Mr. Buchanan was that they spent $30,000, the seven of them, over five years. And when you divide that, that's $857 a year, and the number that I put in is $120 a month, which is almost twice that. If we did get a two-acre parcel, we would be happy to put the rest of it in conservation so that nothing else could be built on that. As far as the 18-foot-wide road, this is not new construction. It's an existing house, so I don't believe that that regulation would cover that. As far as rentals versus homeownership, the money that you all have given to the CPC in the last five years or so, 10.4% of it has been for homeownership, which is well under the 15% that the Housing Protection Plan states is needed by Falmouth. As far as it being out in the boonies, as someone suggested, the other seven people that live on that road, I think, eat well and I think get to amenities in our community. I think that the person that lives out there would have a car, so I don't think they would need public transportation. So all of those arguments, they are arguments, but the reality is that, you know, it is one house at a time, and as I said, it's not the most perfect place, but I think the other 86.49 acres would be sufficient for our water. Thank you.
Mr. Neto?
John Neto, Precinct 9. Fellow town meeting members, those of you that were here at the beginning of this, as Mr. Dufresne gave you the quick history, we bought this purchase for well site. Then we were told to buy the 88 acres to protect that well. We were told by the Board of Selectmen that we had to take the house down, and we voted this body, your predecessors and yourself, some of you were here, we voted the $30,000 to tear the house down, and that's what we should do. Leslie Lutgrenstein said exactly what I was going to say at the podium tonight. This is not a real estate article. This is not an affordable housing article. This is an article about protecting our watershed. Previous to this, we had a citizen of the town of Falmouth ask us to change the wetland regulations, and I'm so happy that we didn't listen to them. But that vote was unanimous not to do it. And listening to the argument, I happen to be sitting in the very, very back, listening to the argument, it centered on protecting the sole-source aquifer of the Cape. Here, we were told we should take this house down to protect not only that aquifer, but the well that sits on that property that we get our water directly from. One of the selectmen on the stage talked about protecting the aquifer. Yet, they're sponsoring an article, "Just let us build this one house." No. This article's coming down to the integrity of our legislative body. Previous speakers have spoken. Let's do what we originally said we were going to do. We all have sympathy? Of course we do. Have we all? I think every one of us has contributed in one way or another by not only our votes, but we've taken money out of our pockets. I have a question from Mr. Rafferty, or Mr. Moderator, through you. May I ask? Mr. Rafferty, in the future of the town of Falmouth, is there any more wells that could be driven to provide the citizens of the town of Falmouth with clean, drinkable water from this site?
I think I've referenced this previously, but a report was done a number of years ago by a company looking at the sources of water in town. This parcel was identified as being capable of having up to four wells on the site. We have one on the site currently. Did that answer your question?
One well there now, with the future of building four more. We pay Mr. Rafferty, Mr. Jack isn't here, he's ill tonight. Went to go see him. He'd be telling you the same thing. Every department head in the town of Falmouth at a meeting that had something to do with this project told the Board of Selectmen that they weren't in favor of this, whether it be planning. Go right down the list, and we've got to get this moving. But this is not, again, an affordable housing project. This is this body being asked to do something, and they do it. And then three years later, as the previous speaker said, "We're going to change our mind?" One of the selectmen, again, on the previous article, says we have to protect the sole-source aquifer. I would hope, and once we spend some money, correct Mr. Duffy at 6:30, Walk White Highway, we're going to have a house that we can turn over to the Falmouth Housing Trust that's right on Route 28, served by public transportation, and we can get the land. Thank you.
Four minutes. Okay. Mr. Keefe?
Brian Keefe, Precinct 4. Motion to move the question, please?
All right. We have a motion to move the previous question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
Okay. The chairs at the ice have it by a 2/3, and the question is closed. This requires a 2/3 vote. So let's queue a slide. Okay. All those in favor of Article 19 as printed signify by pressing 1A. All those opposed, 2B. Yep. It requires 2/3, yep, because of the conveyance of land. By a kind of vote of 65 in favor and 126 opposed, the article does not pass. Do you want to try to do one more before we go?
No.
All right. See you tomorrow at 7:00.
Falmouth Community Television's coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool, and kiddie pool. outdoor pool, and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for fctv.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth, just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
Upper Cape Pet Sitting is your local private pet sitting company on the Upper Cape. We specialize in caring for your pets in the comfort of your own home, allowing for consistency in care routine, dog walking, puppy and cat care, off-leash play, as well as transportation services. Upper Cape Pet Sitting, we treat your pets like our own.
Simply Hearing is an independent, locally-owned center for all your hearing needs. Simply Hearing is conveniently located in the center of Homeport Professional Offices. We offer all manufacturers, simple consultation, and years of service. Simply Hearing, 508-548-8123.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Dogs and Hogs, family-owned and operated for over five years. Our slow-smoked barbecue is available for dining, pickup, or catering, now featuring our homemade barbecue sauce. We also serve beer and wine, have gluten-free options, and lobster rolls.
The attorneys at Oppenheimer-Nickerson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
We at Falmouth Fish believe there is nothing better than a fresh piece of fish direct from the waters of Cape Cod in New England. Nothing beats waking up at 4:00 a.m. to search out the highest-quality seafood from the best fishermen in the world.
Seven Stars Academy, offering martial arts and Tai Chi. Training at Seven Stars Academy can transform your life. It's amazing to see the positive impact it has in our students. Classes for adults and children of all ages. Confidence, not conflict, at Seven Stars Academy of Martial Arts.
Hamilton Tree and Landscape has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Our newest location on Route 151 is now open for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
Thomas J. Bunker and Jeffrey E. Reither are BSS Design, providing land surveying and civil engineering in Falmouth since 1987. Licensed and fully insured, they're located on Catherine Lee Bates Road, and their phone number is 540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth. Bayside Kitchen &amp; Bath at 419 Palmer Avenue in Falmouth, where design and installation professionals work closely with homeowners, architects, and builders, offering a full range of cabinetry, countertops, and faucets. Bayside Kitchen &amp; Bath, returning you to beautiful spaces.
Waypoint Living Spaces, carrying a large variety of products to suit your needs in any living space of your house. Waypoint, available locally at Bayside Kitchen &amp; Bath or online at waypointlivingspace.com.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. With a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessory and gourmet foods, our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
Cavosa Disposal is proud to provide trash removal, recycling, and composting to local businesses in Falmouth and surrounding communities. Cavosa Disposal would like to thank its customers in Falmouth. Cavosa Disposal, 508-563-5070. Family-owned since 1919, at Puritan Cape Cod you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment and much more. Located on Main Street, Falmouth, and in Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis. Puritan Cape Cod, 199 Main Street, Falmouth, and online at puritancapecod.com.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations.
Dolpe Septic Plumbing, residential, commercial pumping and cleaning.
Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum.
The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org.
Partners Technology, voice and data solutions.
The Annie Hart Cool Team.
St. Elizabeth Seaton Church.
Soros Flower Garden Nursery.
M. Duffney Builders.
Neighborhood Falmouth.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop.
Danny's Barber Shop.
Carl F. Cavosa Excavating.
Paul's Precision Automotive Repair.
David Rogers Electric.
Murray and McDonald Insurance.
The Davy Tree Expert Company.
Andy's Barber Shop in the Falmouth Plaza.
Chapman Colen Gleason.
Hanush Jewelers in downtown Falmouth.
Mahoney's Garden Center.
The Cape Cod Five.
Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank in Falmouth and Woods Hole.
Falmouth Volunteers and Public Schools.
Vidal Metalwork.
And Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More.
Additional support provided by Roach Brothers, Stop &amp; Shop, Walmart, and Windfall Market.